All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Mayor Pro Tim will jump on once her internet issues get solved. So today is April 6, 2021, and it is right around 6 o'clock. And we are at our Iowa City City Council formal meeting. And I'm going to ask for roll call, please.
Burgess.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Sally. Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
Well, welcome everyone. And again, Mayor Pro Tim will jump on as soon as she can, having some internet issues. She was jumping in and out of our work session. So she's trying to get that resolved. We're moving on to item number two, which is proclamations. And I've asked, or actually several councillors have volunteered to help with these. We have five proclamations. Mayor Pro Tim was gonna read the first one, but I'm gonna read it in her absence. So the first one is 2A is Arab American Heritage Month. And this is, it states, whereas for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service, culture, and whereas since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends, while also setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants. And whereas they brought with them to America their resilient family values, strong worth ethic, dedication to education, and diversity in faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy. And whereas Arab Americans have also enriched our society by sharing in their entrepreneurial spirit, American spirit, that makes our nation free and prosperous. And whereas the history of Arab Americans in the US remains neglected or defaced by misconceptions, bigotry, and anti-Arab hate and the forms of crimes and speech. And whereas Arab American issues such as civil rights abuses, harmful stereotyping and bullying must be combated in the forms of education and awareness. And whereas they join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. And whereas the incredible contributions and heritage of Arab Americans have helped us build a better nation. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, announce that the Arab America Foundation celebrates the contributions Arab Americans have made to society and hereby proclaim American April 2021 to be Arab American Heritage Month in Iowa City and encourage our citizens to join in this special observance. And to receive this is Newman Abousia. Welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you said, my name is Noah Abousia, and I've been resident of Iowa City for more than 30 years. Arab Americans in Iowa City are a very diverse community. They are black, white, and anywhere in between. They are multi-faith, they are Christians, and Muslims, and Jews, and agnostics, and others. And they have been living in this community and contribute to this community greatly. I want to thank the residents of Iowa City to elect one of us, an Arab American, Mazaheer Salah, as a city council member. And I want to also thank the city council for electing her as a mayor pro tem. So Arab Americans have been in this community for a long time. They contribute, and they are vital part of the Iowa City society. And we are proud to be Arab Americans and contributing a part to doing our part in this community. Arab Americans also stood with the African Americans and Asian Americans in their time of need when they are not treated equally. And we stand for justice for all. So thank you very much for reading this proclamation and issuing this proclamation in our month for our heritage this year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Happy that you were able to join us today. We're on proclamation to be Fair Housing Month, and I welcome councillor Pauline Taylor.
Oh, there we go. Sorry, thank you, Mayor. Whereas April 11, 2021 marks the 53rd anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, sex, familial status, disability, and national origin, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all. And whereas the Iowa City Area Association of Realtors is committed to highlight the Fair Housing Act by continuing to address discrimination in our community to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure everyone of their rights to fair housing. And whereas the city of Iowa City adopted its Fair Housing Ordinance in August of 1964 and currently prohibits discrimination in housing on the basis of race, color, creed, religion, national origin, age, sex, marital status, sexual orientation, familial status, presence or absence of dependents, disability, gender identity, or public assistance source of income is prohibited. And whereas the National Association of Realtors Code of Ethics commits all Realtors to providing equal professional services without discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, and national origin. Now therefore, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 to be Fair Housing Month, which begins a year-long commemoration of the Fair Housing Act in Iowa City and urge all citizens to wholeheartedly recognize the celebration throughout the year. Here to accept is Tracy Adams, President, and Tyler Warner, CEO of the Iowa City Area Association of Realtors. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Tracy Adams. I am the president at Iowa City Area Association of Realtors. ICAR is an organization comprised of 470 Realtors here within the Iowa City greater area. We are joined by 1.4 million Realtors nationally who have made a commitment in our profession to adhere to a strict code of ethics and uphold the values of fair housing for all. Fundamentally, fair housing means that every person can live free. This means that our communities are open and welcoming, free of housing discrimination and hostility. But this also means that each one of us, regardless of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, and disability, has access to neighborhoods of opportunity where our children can attend quality schools, our environment allows us to be healthy, or economic opportunities and self-sufficiency can grow. On behalf of all Realtors at ICAR, thank you, Iowa City, for joining us in honoring the Fair Housing Act by observing April as Fair Housing Month. Together, our commitment to fair housing is one that reflects the needs of our nation today and leads us to a future of true equality for all. Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We are at item 2C, Proclamations. And this one is the National Community Development Week. And we're gonna ask that councillor Taylor read this one as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and HOME Home Investment Partnership Program support viable communities by providing safe, decent, affordable housing, creating safer neighborhoods, helping seniors live independently and investing in our next generation. And whereas in our community, 46 years of CDBG funding has developed a strong network of relationships among local governments, residents, businesses, and nonprofit organizations that provide services and help make possible our commitment to meet the needs of low and moderate income residents. And whereas, the home program has allowed the city, with the help of private and nonprofit partners, to create and preserve affordable housing for low-income families for the past 29 years. And whereas CDBG and home are some of the federal government's most effective means to revitalize communities across the country, the importance of CDBG and home to meet the unique needs of local communities is widely recognized. And whereas, in the last five years, over $3 million in CDBG funds and over $2 million in home funds have been invested in Iowa City. These funds help low-income homeowners complete necessary improvements to their property, provide low-interest loans for entrepreneurs, allow for accessibility improvements in parks, increase the quality and availability of affordable housing throughout the community, and support serving our at-risk youth, elderly, and residents with disabilities. And whereas Iowa City, Iowa, and other local governments have clearly demonstrated the capacity to administer and customize the CDBG and home programs to identify, prioritize, and resolve pressing local problems such as affordable housing, neighborhood and human service needs, job creation and retention, and property redevelopment. Now therefore, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, does hereby proclaim April 5th to April 9th, 2021, to be National Community Development Week in Iowa City, Iowa, and urges all citizens to join us in recognizing and supporting the important roles the CDBG and home programs play in our community. And here to accept is Maria Pedron. Sorry if I mispronounced that, Maria. Our Housing and Community Development Committee Chairperson. Welcome, Maria.
Hello. Thank you. I would like to thank the council for all their support and hard work. This has been an extremely difficult year for everyone, and we really appreciate all you do to improve people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Maria, for being here today. Item 2D, proclamation as National Service Recognition Day. And this will be read by councillor Weiner.
Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas AmeriCorps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and communities from supporting veterans, youth, and other underserved populations by promoting and mentoring healthy lifestyles. And whereas National Service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve, as well as the community members they are serving. And whereas AmeriCorps participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, including organizations in Iowa City, helping to bolster the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas National Service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with, both through their direct service and through management of millions of additional volunteers. And whereas National Service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the day of recognition for National Service on April 6, 2021. Now therefore, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, I do hereby proclaim April 6, 2021, to be National Service Recognition Day in Iowa City, Iowa, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of National Service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. And accepting this proclamation is Emma Markowski, or I hope I didn't mispronounce your last name.
No, you're fine. Thank you so much. I know Slontara is also on the call. We are both Vistas at Shelter House this year. Thank you so much for your support. This is our first year in service, and we've really enjoyed it. We've given up a lot to be Vistas with AmeriCorps, and we really appreciate having the support of the city council. So thank you so much for reading this proclamation.
Thank you so much, Emma, for all the work that you do. And we certainly do recognize this day. I wanted to also acknowledge that our Mayor Pro Tim has joined us. Welcome. And hope your internet issues don't continue. We've all been there. Moving on to item 2E, Proclamations, Week of the Young Child. And this is whereas 4Cs of Johnson County, along with the Iowa Association for the Education of Young Children and other local organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Week of the Young Child, April 10 through the 16, 2021. And whereas by highlighting the need for high-quality early care and education for all children and families within our communities and the state, these groups are committed to the early care and education system in Iowa that will ensure every child beginning at birth is healthy and successful. And whereas the latest research on brain development and how children learn and what we know about the return on our investment in young children, we fully support the need for access to high-quality early childcare and educational services. And whereas the future of our communities and the economy of our state depends on the quality of the early care and education experiences, as well as access to the high-quality early care and educational programs provided to young children today. And whereas we recognize the vital work performed by early care and education professionals, express our gratitude for their important services, and support efforts to see that they are fairly compensated. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim April 10 through April 16 to be Week of the Young Child in Iowa City, Iowa. And here to receive this proclamation is Missy Forbes with 4Cs Community Coordinated Childcare. Welcome, Missy.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. As the Executive Director of 4Cs, and on behalf of the local Week of the Young Child Committee, I thank you for recognizing the Week of the Young Child with this proclamation. The Week of the Young Child has been nationally recognized for 50 years in an attempt to honor the hard work of childcare providers who provide support and have the attention of our earliest learners at a time when brain development is at its height. Over the past year, the childcare workforce was deemed essential during the pandemic. It was often went unrecognized by many in their thanks and recognition of other industries. I thank you as our city council and mayor for recognizing this workforce, recognizing the important work that they do, and your support in declaring the Week of the Young Child. Thank you.
Thank you. We are moving on to items number three through seven, which is our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve, please? Don't move, Thomas.
Second, ma'am.
And would anyone from the public like to address any topic that is within the consent agenda? If so, please raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, press star nine, and I will call upon you. All right. I don't... Oh. We do ask that people keep their comments three to five minutes. Welcome, Martha. And you're on mute. There you go.
Hi. I wanted to... I'd like to speak in opposition to the city of Iowa City possibly installing traffic cameras for the purpose of traffic law enforcement. Councillor Thomas has proposed this idea under the guise of equity.
This, Martha?
Yes.
If this isn't on the, under this agenda, but we'll come to our next item during public comment, and you can come back then.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Yep. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address any item that is on the consent agenda? Please raise your hand. Seeing no one, council. Council discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We are on to item number eight, which is community comment. And this is a time where the community can come and talk about anything that is not on our agenda, that's not an item on our agenda. And I will ask people to keep their comments three to five minutes. And we're gonna start with Martha. Welcome again, Martha.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry for speaking out of turn there. Again, I am speaking in opposition to the city of Iowa City possibly installing traffic cameras for the purpose of traffic law enforcement. In the past, councillor Thomas has proposed this idea under the guise of equity. The claim is that traffic cameras would create equity by correcting racial disparities in traffic stops and reduce the number of interactions drivers would have with law enforcement. This is definitely quite the spin, and surely a Trojan horse. There's a Stanford University study of nearly 100 million traffic stops. And they found that police stopped and searched black and Latino drivers on the basis of less evidence than used in stopping white drivers. And folks can find the details of that study at openpolicing.stanford.edu. In an effort to find proof of councillor Thomas's claims, I looked at some of the cities and states used in this study and found that many of them already have traffic cameras. For example, New Orleans has had traffic cameras since 2007, Philadelphia since 2005, San Francisco since 1996. So it appears, at least in these cities, it does not appear that traffic cameras have created equity or lessened racial disparities in traffic stops. There are many non-punitive measures that have proven to reduce red light running and speeding. For example, there is at least one study out of Texas. There's tons of studies across the country that have found that lengthening the yellow light time by even one second can reduce the rate of red light running by up to 70%. Whereas traffic red light cameras can only reduce red light running by 50 to 58%. So it would make sense, if we're really concerned about safety in the community, that we would use measures like this. And there's also a number of road engineering solutions, which I also heard councillor Thomas discuss previously. And I hope that the city council would look at those first. But there's many ways to reduce speeding and red light cameras, red light running with non-punitive measures. And I also want to point out that I hope that the city council, if they do take this up and officially decide to revisit red light cameras, that they be honest about the fact that this is repealing a citizens initiative that took place in 2012 and 2013. The reason Iowa City has a ban on traffic surveillance is because of an initiative petition that has already been passed. And so when you talk about red light cameras, please be honest about what you're actually doing. You are reversing the will of the people. Thank you. That was all.
Thank you. Welcome, Nicholas, followed by Jennifer.
Good evening, council. I want to address a statement councillor Mims made at your work session on March 23 about what she characterized as the, quote, hateful tenor of those of us who have come to address council of late. Now, this, the reason why I wanted to address that specifically is because just yesterday, Mayor County, for those of you who don't know, that's the mayor of Des Moines, was actually discussing in their city council meeting, actually, ways to essentially bring public comment to heel, because he personally doesn't like the way people have been criticizing his tenure, even going so far as to suggest having armed guards at public meetings in order to keep order. And frankly, councillor Mims, your authoritarian tendencies have already been on display. You wrote a lengthy missive for the press citizen and other outlets, proclaiming how appreciative you were for the actions of ICPD, even as they were being widely criticized by everyone else for the violence they perpetrated against the same people that you now want to tone police. It's easy for you to ignore how some of those who have expressed their anger and frustration in this space have been the victims of those whose authoritarian violence you see fit to praise. Tell me, councillor, what exactly is more hateful? The occasional F-bomb? Or the fact that this council has let a housing crisis run unabated for years? And don't give me your BS about how like, oh, we contribute $1 million to affordable housing. It hasn't done anything. And in a recent University of Iowa survey, a full 60% of students said that they have skipped meals due to lack of money. And at that same Oberman Center panel, the panelists were in universal agreement that one of the primary drivers of food insecurity on and off campus is actually housing. And so while property values have risen precipitously in recent years, benefiting people like you, vastly increasing your own wealth, and by the way, your fellow councillors, renters, who are the majority of all residents in this city, are literally starving themselves to maintain a status quo you all directly benefit from. And I don't have to wonder if you see this as a net positive. I don't have to speculate about your feelings, because in a recent budget discussion, you unprompted praised the city for both lowering the property tax levy while also noting how rising property values have made sure revenues continue to increase. Both of these contribute directly to your bottom line. Meanwhile, the majority of residents who rent are paying someone else's mortgage, building their wealth, even as they struggle to scrape together enough money to eat. Is it any wonder that they might be just a little frustrated with a city council who not only don't do anything about the conditions that immiserate them, but in fact actively encourage those conditions? So we come here pleading, hoping you will actually hear us and address the problems that affect the vast majority of residents. You all have the luxury of decorum, because none of this is taking food out of your mouths. Those who serve your drinks, cook your food, clean your houses, clean your businesses, can't even afford to live here. So frankly, from my perspective, it makes sense that we and others would be at their wits' end. As an elected official, it's incumbent upon you all to set your hurt feelings aside and actually do what people need, not put pads or bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Welcome, Jennifer, followed by Dan.
Banta from the Iowa City Area Business Partnership. I wanted to give a quick update on our climate action partnership with the city. Back in February, we kicked off the first in a four-part educational series in response to the city's climate action plan. The business partnership was joined by the city's Climate Action Committee and representatives from Mid-American Energy on February 8. The presentation covered ways that small businesses could take advantage of different energy efficiency programs and rebates available to lower their energy costs long-term. Wendy Ford and Sarah Gardner answered questions from several Iowa City businesses about how they could take advantage of these savings and how they could get themselves listed on the qualified service providers on Mid-America's website. This session was the highest live attendance we've had for a smart series event and the most active Q&amp;A session we've had for any of our online educational programming, telling us that our business community is eager to learn more about how they can make their business more sustainable. So I'm here to tell you about our next session. Our next session is on May 11, titled LED Lighting: More Savings Than You Think. And we'll cover, obviously, LED lighting resources, how to make the switch, and the savings associated. These programs are open to the public. You can go to iowacityarea.com to sign up. Later this year, we'll cover reducing water usage and green commercial transportation in our future events. We're excited to partner with the city on this climate action plan because it aligns with our mission as well. We appreciate your leadership in making climate action a priority for our community and for our businesses, and look forward to the year of educational programming we have planned to help our business community become more sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Dan, followed by Paul.
Hi. Whether members of the council will admit it or not, they furthered white supremacy by voting to suspend the TRC. It is clear that the majority of you put personal relationships It is clear that the majority of you put personal relationships and questionable reasoning ahead of the well-being of your people. However, that is not surprising, since most of you have shown yourselves to be nothing more than tools of this town's racist establishment. On March 23rd, the mayor said that these meetings are not about the council versus the public, but that is very clearly what it has become. How else can we describe you ignoring the voices of those who have consistently showed up and revealed just how awful the police system is here? Not only do you ignore them with your vote, but you also ignore their emails and attempts to reach out. The thing is, Council, several people, myself included, have indeed been very rough on you and at times insulting. Will you like to know why? It is because the majority of you have completely lost our respect. People are defined by their actions and accomplishments. And over the last year, your actions have revealed you to be duplicitous and lacking the least bit of integrity. Just because you were elected doesn't automatically entitled you to respect. We care much more about the active and passive ways you are harming this community. I guess you have, quote, defined your positions, but terrible positions. Meeting after meeting, the public comes up here and provides well-rounded reasons for change. And yet you ignore the problems they described in the speeches they offered. Not only that, but you continue to support and defend the root cause of those problems. What are you doing? So time for a da-da-da-da shout outs. Susan Mims, your statements and voting behavior have been harmful to this community at best. They're not the worst malicious. More so than any racist who physically attacked us last summer, you have nurtured and upheld white supremacy in this community. You remember that open letter you wrote in September criticizing IFRs attempt to create change while simultaneously praising the police who abused us? Yeah, it was published days after demonstrators were nearly killed by motorists and at a time when many of us were being unjustly harassed by police and stalked by dangerous members of the Aryan Brotherhood. I speak for many when I say that was a very traumatic time. And such a letter was inappropriate and tasteless. The police you speak of so highly did nothing when Michael Stefanic clouded his courage to us. And more than that, they illegally detained numerous peaceful protesters throughout the summer for no valid reason. At the work session on the 23rd, you said that tonight you plan to, quote, push back against criticism. So it looks like we're either going to hear you, hear you make yourself look ridiculous tonight trying to defend and justify the terrible things you have said and done, or just be silent as you see that they were awful. Between now and the end of your term, I hope you do some serious self-reflection and better yourself in your votes by becoming a stronger ally to racial justice. Something you will not do. Perhaps it's just better if you announce your resignation tonight, because you are at a Tom Gill of the Iowa City Council. Only he has the decency to resign. Laura Burgess, I honestly don't know what to say to you. By virtue signaling how progressive you are while using your position on the council to sit in the faces of your BIPOC residents, you have revealed yourself to be one of the worst neoliberals in this community. You have failed to deliver on the liberal values you love to preach about. You have, you revealed that you had no interest in stopping the abuse coming from former TRC members, but jumped at the opportunity to shut down the TRC when those members had been removed and progress had started being made. I will never forget how you expressed more outrage at you suggest spray paint than the abusive activists faced at the hands of police racist members of the community. You hard-don about there being, quote, "A better way to create change." Moment our people attempt to work within the system, you stand in their way. It's embarrassing that you don't realize it's not helpful to target the symptoms of social injustice without working in good faith to solve the underlying issue. Where was your op-ed condemning those who hit us with their cars? Or the police who illegally harass demonstrators? Nowhere. Instead, you criticize demonstrators while praising the systemic racism they oppose. I have more respect for people who come right out with their racism than those who hide it. Do better. Dennis Weiner, you suggested that in order to heal the fractured TRC, you wanted to use the mediator who we rightfully called out for having political connections with Roy Sand Porter. This is just one instance of you not listening to anything we say. Like Mims and Burgess are a fantastic moment for you. You've used comments, op-eds, and votes to sit in the faces of those trying to advance racial justice in Iowa City. Your rhetoric has cobbled police while antagonizing those trying to stop ICPD from carrying out abuses. Please change. Mayor Teague, your unwillingness to speak out about Roy Sand's abuses as a member of the TRC reveals how you are more invested in your personal relationship with them than the good of the community. Furthermore, your conduct at meetings, especially the meeting where the TRC was suspended, shows you are more committed to criticizing demonstrators and activists than fighting this city's racist establishment. I don't understand why you insist on upholding systemic racism, but it is, but it's clear to observers that you are not interested in fighting against the type of black institutions and policies, let alone racist police. Pauline Taylor, although you have been seemingly quiet about issues of racial
Thank you, Dan.
You have been no less important than any of the people
Thank you, Dan. Welcome, Paul, followed by Bailey.
Hi there. My name is Paul Dirk Keller. And I am a resident of the Mandeville Heights neighborhood, specifically right across the highway from the VA Hospital. And I'm here tonight on behalf of my neighbors and I asking the city council for help. I moved into this neighborhood specifically called the Capital View Block, because we have such a beautiful vista featuring Oh Cap from our neighborhood. It sits up high above Mandeville Heights. For 29 years, we have lived with the University of Iowa hospitals and clinics, life care helicopters. They're a vital part of our healthcare system throughout the state, throughout the Midwest. And what we've noticed in the last three decades almost is a huge uptick in the number of flights, the size of the helicopters, and most importantly to us, the noise level of these much larger helicopters. You'd have to be here to appreciate it. I'm actually coming to you now from my basement office. And since I've been on the program, the last 37 minutes, we've had two interruptions from liflight helicopters. Long story short, about a year ago, I reached out to, at first Jeff Fruein there with the city, who sent me, who told me that there was really no regulations in place that the city could implement to address our issues with the noise factor. Noise so loud, so deafening, that if you're anywhere outside, you have to stop. You can't hear one another talk. You are pummeled, your body is pummeled with vibrations from these helicopters. They're really loud. And the number of them these days has made it just really difficult to even be indoors. Our walls will vibrate and shake. Pat, our pets are just terrorized. They're so loud. It's hard to even hear yourself talk inside sometimes. Again, about a year ago, Jeff Fruein directed me to Diane Lamb, who is the UIHC Department of Emergency Medicine Air Care Program Manager. She was very friendly to me a year ago and said that, yes, we have rules in place there. Pilots are not supposed to fly over your neighborhood. And they had specific other approaches and departures. And I said, well, it's not happening. And so from there, I went to our county commissioners, who directed me to the Federal Aviation Administration, both locally in Cedar Rapids, regionally in Dubuque, then Des Moines. And finally, I ended up in Kansas City, Missouri, talking to somebody. All of them said they had no jurisdiction. They had no ability to address the noise issues, as if no one's in charge of the airspace above our city and specifically above university hospitals. What I'm here tonight to do is ask you, on behalf of my neighbors and I, to consider this topic for a work session. I'd really appreciate it if you discussed this. It is pretty unique. And as I said, I've been here 29 years. Back in the beginning, you know, you heard a liflight helicopter, like the old days, you used to make a sign of the cross and say a quick prayer for whoever's coming in or going out. It was so rare back then. Now it's big business. This is a huge moneymaker for the hospitals, for the doctors, for the pilots, for everyone involved, all the staffing it takes to operate such a big business. But yet there don't appear to be any regulations on noise. And I'd really appreciate if you would see it to have enough value to discuss it further at a work session. Maybe assign a staff member to work with me to communicate with Diane Lamb. She's promised me for a year that she's talked to the pilots and they just keep making so much noise. It's really a quality of life factor at this point in our neighborhood. Other than that, I don't know what else to say. I'd appreciate hearing back from somebody. I appreciate you being here tonight and allowing me time to speak to you. I wish you luck in all the other challenges that are before you. Thanks so much and be well.
Thank you. Welcome Bailey, followed by Taylor.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, I wanted to second everything that Nicholas said. I also have a very genuine concern that the council's attitude and many other things that are happening at both the local and state level in Iowa are setting a dangerous precedent for our local freedom of speech. I especially believe this because of the time restraints and almost cutoffs that council faced when discussing the TRC. If it wasn't for a council member standing up, the meeting would have been ended and a lot of people's voices wouldn't have been heard, which is the purpose of these meetings. Nicholas said this better than I did, but I've been reading about everything that's been happening in Des Moines with Mayor County. He is trying to cut down people's time, completely ban people who are not being germane, which I think is not acceptable at all. And the current attitude of our council makes me worry that we might follow suit. There's also been some nitpicking that people from Coralville were speaking in the meetings, which the cities are combined. So I just think that's a moot point. And especially that the GOP is backing legislation right now that would ban teaching divisive concepts in government agency diversity training in school curriculum. These divisive concepts are that the US and the state of Iowa fundamentally are systematically racist or sexist. So there's just a lot going on right now that I believe protesters are being attacked at a state level. The Associated Press just published today that Iowa police have had a significant increase in use of force. In 2020, there was an 83% increase in police drawing guns on citizens. And there's all sorts of things that are going on. People are going to be angry, as they should be, and enforcing decorum is a suppression tactic. If you all truly believe that you are doing a good job, you should not be upset by the hateful, as Mims said, reactions in past work session. Public officials are going to get reactions they do not like. And if you cannot handle that, maybe this isn't the place for you. I'd also like to point out that council has broken protocol and I believe the chair of council has broken protocol many times that I've seen with my own eyes. But when we do it, there's a possibility that our rights may be restricted. I just don't believe that this is a fair system at all. And honestly, people at Casey's put up with more than the city council does at time. And you voluntarily took this position. You are paid with public dollars to this position. And people do not have to be polite to take part in local politics. When you're playing with people's lives, you can't expect them to be polite. And also how I view polite is not how you view polite. There's been a lot of things that have gone on that I have not agreed with. And yeah, so if someone is concerned with their well-being, they don't have to be respectful. And you should first and foremost be concerned about people's well-being before you engage with your ego. And you must be able to be criticized, because it is literally your job. So I just hope we can change some of the language being used complaining about a position that you took voluntarily. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome Taylor, followed by Alexi.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Hi, I would like to second everything that Nicholas, Dan, and Bailey said. I would urge you not to fall down the trap of tone policing us. I think you would find that we would speak a lot less angrily and we would be a lot less upset if we did not have cause to be upset, if we believed that we were being listened to. Instead, we have been dismissed throughout this entire past year. Just at that meeting where the TRC was suspended immediately after public comment ended, immediately Bruce Teague said, we've heard a lot of what IFR wants, or we've heard from a lot of IFR. I think there were something like 40 speakers. Not all of them were directly, you know, associated with IFR. IFR has organized a lot of people in this community and they've done awesome work. But what you know and what you don't want to acknowledge is that IFR is just right. And a lot of people just also feel the same way IFR does. I personally am not part of IFR. I don't know anyone in IFR. And I've been emailing you and been ignored this entire past year. And I've heard things like, well, you know, IFR doesn't get to speak for the community. Well, what about, you know, how are you listening to the community? Because it doesn't seem like it. And for every person who speaks up in these meetings, who has access and the ability and the time and the courage to speak, they're representing people who do not have those things. So I would urge you to think about the fact that almost three hours of public comment was almost entirely telling you to do something very, very simple and clear, and you did not do. And you have not shown up for this community. And I would urge to not get on your high horse about language or about tone of voice, because that is not productive and it is not going to build any goodwill with the public, which right now there is very little. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome Alexa.
Hi.
Hello. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Alexei Gurtovoy. I live in Iowa City. And I also want to comment on the subject of traffic cameras and specifically address Councillor John Thomas, who suggested a couple of times that we look at traffic cameras as a measure for reducing the number of police interaction, police interactions between the public and the ICPD. And I want to start with a specific statement from John, who was quoted in a recent Daily Iwon article saying that, quote, "Traffic stops can cause strong feelings ranging from emotional distress to feeling like your life is threatened." Yes, I 100% agree with John here. Traffic stops do cause these feelings for a lot of people. But I want to ask him a question. And my question is, John, why do you think traffic stops cause these feelings? Do you think maybe the fact that the police have a reputation for unjustified excessive application of force, including deadly force, has something to do with it? Or maybe the fact that the cops have an absolute say in what is, quote unquote, right and wrong? And a license to do pretty much anything to you with impunity? And if you disagree with the cops' notion of how a citizen ought to act during the interaction, even in the slightest, chances are that you're going to end up in jail or worse, especially if you're a person of color. So do you think maybe those feelings apply to other police interactions as well? And perhaps we should address the root cause here? Or are we really saying, yes, our city policing is prejudiced and harmful and violent, but we lack the political will to fix that? So we are going to let the policies and practices be. We're going to let the belligerent cops keep their jobs. Let them police us, just not over here. Let's get them off the road, but everywhere else it's fine. Is that the message here? Now, I personally think it's the best naive to hope that even if, and that's a big if, but even if we somehow get a number of cops off the roads, they're just going to sit at their desks and not interact with the public or that they're going to stay off the roads long term. Why would they? We can't reform or keep them under control now. That's what John is always saying here. So what makes us think we'll be able to do so when they're out of the spotlight? When they decide to entertain the public enough? But what's really frustrating to me in this whole discussion is just how matter-of-factly Councillor Thomas is talking about implementing technology that is explicitly barred from being used on our streets by our own city code. It is currently against the law to install traffic cameras anywhere in Iowa City. Yes, the city council does have the authority to repeal ordinance, but that is not the power that should be taken lightly. And most certainly, it's not something that you but that is not the power that should be taken lightly, and most certainly, it's not something that you skip over as Council Thomas seemed to be eager to do. Not only the majority of Iwon's opposed traffic cameras, but specifically forty-three hundred Iowa City citizens signed the petition that resulted in the current prohibition of the punitive and oppressive automatic ticketing systems. That's forty-three hundred people who put their name on paper to say no to this. So please have some respect. If you don't, I can guarantee you a lot more people will show up at the polls to repeal your repeal and then at the next city council election. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council that hasn't already? Please raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, press star nine. Okay, seeing no one. We are going to move on to item number nine. Nine A is annexation Finkbine, resolution to annex approximately three point six one acres of land located near the intersection of Finkbine commuter drive and Melrose Avenue conditioned upon a twenty-eight E agreement between the city of Iowa City and the city of University Heights. Approving the twenty-eight E agreement and authorizing the order file and the city the twenty-eight E agreement. I'm gonna open the public hearing. And staff presentation, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Council, Danielle Sitzman, Neighborhood and Development Services. Um I'm gonna give one staff presentation on the first two agenda items that are related to each other. The first one being the annexation that the mayor just introduced, and the second being the rezoning of the same or uh most of the same area. Now, this is an application submitted for annexation and, and rezoning um of just about six acres in total of land currently owned by the State Board of Regents for the University of Iowa, and parts of which are located. We're talking first about the annex area located in another city, located in the city of University Heights. This slide shows the area of the annexation, which is under consideration tonight in the white dashed outline and then the rezoning, which would be for that area and some uh land uh also in Iowa City. Um the property that was, is owned by the University of Iowa, um which was formerly the Athletic Club, has been demolished. And as part of that redevelopment, the university actually issued a request for proposals to select a third-party developer to create a unique and attractive neighbor for its recently renovated golf course and clubhouse area. Um the university would be maintaining ownership of the land, but entering into a long-term use with the private developer. Um and the proposal would be shifting the boundaries between Iowa City and University Heights to avoid the redevelopment or building itself actually straddling uh two jurisdictions. Um concurrent with the annexation and rezoning, University Heights, of course, we're doing on their side of it the severance steps it would have to take to transfer to another jurisdiction. Typically, the city does not review University of Iowa, a project owned by the state, and we don't have that authority, however, in this case because they will um be leasing the land for development and is subject to zoning. Um the zoning is done in overlay zoning districts since university retains ownership. Um so it's a combination of the existing zoning and adding on another zoning district. In this case, a medium-density multi-family zoning district, uh the boundary of the total rezoning shown in the white outline here. Um staff does recommend that the area be uh go through a subdivision process as well to create lots that correspond to draw those boundaries of the zoning districts um more accurately. So that would be a future step. Um because this site does contain sensitive features, there's also a site plan for the Marine Development Plan included in this. So this shows the general layout of the development and the kind of heat colors, the building footprint. And they're proposing a four-story multi-family building that fronts Finkbine commuter drive on the west, which is a private street. Um also Melrose Avenue across the bottom to the south. And the development would be for active senior housing, not age-restricted necessarily. That would include one hundred and sixteen dwelling units. Uh two hundred and sixty, sixty-three parking spaces located both inside the building, which we kind of see on the southern end of the building, and outside the building on the surface parking lot to the east. And the primary access to the parking would be off a driveway uh on Melrose Avenue. Um both to the surface lot and to the interior parking, not through the distinct uh commuter drive here. There would be some parking on front of the building, accessible there, but only a very limited amount of approximately seven parking stalls. Because this is annexation, staff looks at the criteria for annexation. It really does have to do with considering whether the land area is appropriate to be annexed into the city. In this case, University Heights is completely surrounded by the city of Iowa City, so this is not peripheral area. This is an area that's already urbanized and well within all of the boundaries of Iowa City. Um this is a request to transfer simply a portion from one city to the other. Um there are existing utilities um in the vicinity, and actually, the city of Iowa City provides quite a few services to University Heights in one way or another, including um transit, fire, water and sewer. So um it's not imposing undue burden. We're already involved in those services. And finally, whether the control is in the best interest of the city, um again, adjacent to the city limits and not stepping beyond what we've already committed to doing. And the annexation is also conditioned upon a twenty-eight E agreement between the two cities for cost-sharing. Um it facilitates the annexation and avoids the development, again, that would straddle two cities. Um staff does not believe that this particular annexation is subject to the Affordable Housing Annexation Policy. And that's really meant for greenfield annexation of property on the city's fringe area of transferring land between unincorporated Johnson County and into the city, which is not the case. Um really, that kind of agreement acknowledges discretion with the city to determine whether to grow or not. Um that's not the circumstance, again, already shifting boundaries between two urbanized areas in, in the circumstance. So moving on to the rezoning, which would be the next case on your agenda, we do have general and specific criteria that we review as part of that. Um um the particular area does not have a specific district plan, but it does meet several of the goals of the overall comprehensive plan relating to compact and efficient development that's connected to existing neighborhoods. Provides a diversity of housing options and supports infill development and redevelopment in areas where there are services and infrastructures in existence. Um applications for planned development rezonings are reviewed for compliance with additional following standards. We'll go through here, which allow for some variation from zoning standards. In this case, this project is only asking for one variation. I think to the maximum height, um they're asking to modify the maximum height from the thirty-five foot height limit to sixty-three feet in height, again, for a four-story building. So walking through some of the considerations for the specific criteria, having to do, uh first of all, land uses proposed. Um the proposed zone allows for a density of twenty-four dwelling units per acre. The proposed uh development is within that zoning uh dozen, density designation. Um again, a hundred and sixteen multi-family units targeted to active seniors. It did mention the rezonings or the planning, so we'll move on to the design. Um criteria that we also review. Um this is a block-scale building, uh approximately seven hundred feet in length, four stories, as I mentioned. Um the front's Finkbine commuter drive on the west, um and it is adjacent to some single-family development directed to the east, which is a smaller height, um one to one and a half stories in length. And this development is providing a landscape buffer between itself and those existing homes, um locating itself over a hundred feet away from the adjacent lot lines to the east. It is also adjacent to some single-family development, but that would be on the south side and of Melrose Avenue across the street. Um the proposed building will be required to conform to the city's multi-family site development standards as well, which regulate the design of parking, landscaping and screening. The multi-family site development standards are reviewed at site plan stage. So that is a stage that happens after um zoning and planning occur. Moving on to open space, there's several kinds of open spaces that we discussed. One is parkland dedication or peanloo, and that will be satisfied at subdivision stage. Peanloo is probably uh the most appropriate option in this circumstance. Private open space or onsite open space for residences is being provided as part of this project. And they are exceeding the requirements, they're providing uh seventy-three hundred square feet of private open space. The base requirement is closer to twenty-five hundred square feet. So the use of extensive distance and landscape buffer and open space and adherence to the multi-family site design, design standards results in the proposed project being complementary and compatible in density and design with adjacent development. Height maximums may be modified as requested, provided as the design of the development results in sufficient light and air circulation for each building and adequate accessible open space for residents of the development. Typical university development, as I mentioned, does not require city review, so the development will not adversely affect things like views, light, air and property values and privacy any more than a convention of development that the university might choose to undertake without our regulation. And finally, just to talk a little bit about traffic circulation. Um we didn't ask the applicant to uh conduct a traffic study because there was concern about the um level of operation, service operation of the intersection of the commuter drive and Melrose Avenue. Um not unexpectedly, the results of the traffic study did indicate that several of those turning movements are currently failing under current traffic conditions, and a traffic signal would be warranted at this, at the intersection of commuter drive and Melrose Avenue. However, this particular project is not adding to that burden, and as I mentioned, most of their traffic flow will come and go not through that intersection. Um so really, uh at this point, staff is not recommending a traffic signal be added because this development is not contributing to that. Uh there is improvements that staff has conditioned upon the rezoning for turning movement. Eastbound and Melrose left turn in, um that turn lane will be required to be installed to help facilitate turning movements and free flow on the public street. Um all of the existing queuing, not all, some of the significant queuing issues do occur, but they occur on the private drive. The university is aware of this condition and has interest in resolving that. Um certainly, as I said, staff would not uh recommend further development on commuter drive. It does increase traffic without addressing the traffic signal. But however, at this time, do not recommend it as part of this project. As I mentioned, there are some sensitive features on this um property. Uh most important are the red areas indicated here as slopes that are being impacted by the development. Um the developer has tried to adjust the location of their building to avoid those areas as much as possible. Um but it does require a level-two design review tonight, and so is a part of this application. Just to go over the steps of this development, again, there are two steps under consideration tonight. Uh the annexation twenty-eight E agreement, and then the rezoning to medium-density multi-family overlay districts. Um eventually, there will need to be a plan, as I mentioned, to facilitate the um zoning designations lining up of lots. And then final reviews of site plans and building permits by staff. So as I said, one presentation. And two motions. So um the first motion, uh along with the annexation coming to you tonight is based on the review of relevant criteria. Staff does recommend approval of the proposed annexation. At its February eighteenth meeting, by a vote of seven to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission did concur with staff's opinion and recommended approval. A good neighbor meeting was held on September of twenty. My favorite staff report.
Thank you. Does Council have any questions for Danielle? Alright, here and none. Um I'm gonna ask if the public has any questions, if so, or I'm sorry, has any comments, please raise your hand. And I'll call upon you, if you're on the phone, press star nine. Now I'll call upon you. Um and welcome Sarah Barron, followed by Dan, and we also ask people to keep their comments, three to five minutes.
Hi, Council, this is Sarah Barron from the Affordable Housing Coalition. Um I'd like to read to you from the policy that you adopted regarding the affordable housing component of the annexation policy. Um it says, "The annexation policy is hereby amended to include the following. If the annexation is for residential development, that will result in the creation of ten or more new housing units. The development will support the city's goal of creating and maintaining the supply of affordable housing. Such support shall be based on providing affordable units equal to ten percent of the total units..." Dot, dot, dot. I won't read the rest. Um however, I see nothing in here that indicates that this is limited to greenfield annexation um rather than an area that's already urbanized. And I ask the council to um continue their commitment to this annexation policy and require that the Affordable Housing Policy um be enforced for this new annexation. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Wel- welcome Nicholas, followed by Dan.
Uh hello, Council. Um actually, S- Sarah put it quite eloquently. Um you, you already have rules about how your own affordable housing, like, requirements are supposed to work. And it's sort of annoying when you just refuse to implement them properly. I would also note, Mayor, that um during public comment, you skipped over someone. Um it would only be appropriate to give them an opportunity now to speak, considering that was your mistake. Um I know you don't want to be silencing a trans woman at a time when we were literally coming here to complain to you about possible censorship. So I really hope that you do the right thing and you let Harry speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Um I, I will respond to that. Um I did not see Harry hand at all. So um maybe we need to connect with Harry. Um and maybe if you can raise your hand now, Harry, I would allow you to speak, but I'm gonna go ahead to Dan Gable. Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, great. Awesome. Alright. Firstly, firstly, I want to second everything that's been said about the city council's failure to address calls to defund the police. Firstly, y'all spend a lot of time talking about how your feelings are hurt and how you're like worried about businesses and shit like that. Nobody wants to hear that, trust me. Like, especially when all of us only get like three to five minutes to talk. Come on. Alright, and but like, come on, we only get three to five minutes to speak and hold you accountable and tell you to do your jobs. We're not even like trying to hurt your feelings. We're just trying to do our civil duty as citizens. Alright, now I'm trying to keep it germane, so I'm gonna keep going. I know that city council is listening in detail to what we are saying. I know that they hear our calls for mental health professionals in place of police. My evidence for this is that Joff Ruin's naive plan for police reform included a proposal for mental health professionals to respond to situations where they're needed. Unfortunately, an included police coming along with them, and I've said before that this does not solve the problem of discretion. I personally believe that this section of Joff Ruin's plan was to attempt to use revolutionary language about mental health and twisted for his own police, pro-police agenda.
I, I have one question. I have one question for you.
As long as it doesn't come to my time.
Oh, we'll, we'll restart that. Um will you state your name for us, please?
Uh Harry Monaligo.
Okay, for whatever reason, it's coming up as uh Dan Gable.
I don't know. Shoot, I, sorry, I got my link from Dan. Yeah, why is that going on? I, that must be why you didn't hear me.
Um yeah, I'm, yes, I'm sorry about that, but please continue and your time will be um given back to you.
Okay, I personally believe that this section of Joff Ruin's plan was to attempt to use revolutionary language about mental health and twisted for his own pro-police agenda because he wants to appeal to the people, but is not committed to defunding the police. He is not committed to protecting us. I don't know if anybody in the city council is, and I'm sorry, but that's just the truth of how much I trust or just don't trust you guys at this point. Secondly, I'd like to talk about the traffic camera thing. I've heard many people say that they trust traffic cameras to be less racist than police officers, but personally.
Mayor, this is not germane to the public hearing that's in front of you. If you choose to let him, the, the gentleman speak, then you're gonna need to allow anybody who wishes, wishes to speak off-topic, speak.
I mean, was, I, I, I was trying to speak during general comment, but I was not seen. That's why I'm speaking about whatever I'd like to speak, Eleanor.
Harry, I think what we'll do, I, I, I thought you were Dan, but certainly I, I do believe that the council would agree to have uh you come back and speak, but we're gonna.
I would like to continue to speak now because I tried to speak during general comments. And you know, I, I've, I've been kinda like waiting all day for this, and I kinda wanna go outside while it's still sunny. Okay? And so, can I, my time reset for my general comment that I'm trying to give you? And can I, can I say it without being interrupted?
Harry, if, if I can have you come right after I close this, I'll go back to public comment and I'll allow you to start your time over.
How long would that be?
Uh once we're done with this item.
How long will that be?
I, I, I can't tell you, but once we're done with this item.
Well, I'm asking that you keep it under 20 minutes. Can you, can, is that a reasonable request?
I can't, you know, give you a time.
Well, can I, well, could you just let me speak now, then? Like, why, what's the deal? Like, why do you have, why? Because I mean, everybody else got to speak during general comments.
And I am very sorry that I did not notice that it wasn't under your name. But what I'm going to do is come back for, to allow you to speak, and if you're present, we'll hear you. I'm gonna call Dan Gable at this time. Thank you, Harry.
At that time? Okay, well.
Welcome, Dan.
Hi, yeah, I think that this is the real Dan. I think Harry should be allowed to speak now. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the topic on hand for the annexation of Finkbine? Welcome, Renee.
Hi, my name is Renee Hamad. My pronouns is she/her/hers, and I also request that Harry is able to speak at this time.
Thank you, Renee. And we are in the middle of a public hearing for the annexation of Finkbine, so we have to continue with the, with the public hearing. Would anyone else like to address the annexation for Finkbine? CNN One, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, ma'am.
Second, Burgis.
All right, council discussion.
I, Ms. Pauline, I was a little disappointed at first that property that the athletic club was demolished because I always thought that it was a very attractive building and on that entrance into Iowa City on Melrose, it was always nice to see that building. So it's good to see some development here. And it just makes sense to approve this annexation plan since you, the University Heights is willing to go along with this, so we should take this opportunity to do so. It just would be logical to have all of the units in the same property rather than some in Iowa City and some in U Heights. But there's several items that are concerning to me about, about the development. And I don't know if this would be the time to talk about them and, and maybe propose some conditions. One that really stuck out to me was there's one of the pages that talks about a grove of trees. And it said that 71.5% of the trees are planned to be removed. That's a lot of trees. And at this time of climate action and the importance, people seeing the importance of trees in our environment, that's a lot of trees to be removed. And along those lines of the proximity due to sensitive slopes, it seems like it's like right on the verge of that slope. And I would hope that it could be redesigned a little bit or maybe lessen the size of it, so it's not right on that slope. Also, it quotes that the proposed development is larger in scale than surrounding properties, which we traditionally haven't liked to see that. We like things to be sort of in proportion or maybe corner properties to be taller. This is not definitely a corner. It's kind of in the middle of a block. Also, that they're requesting a waiver for the 35-foot height maximum to exceed 63 feet. Let's see, what was another thing? Oh, the, and what's been brought up is that the, our annexation policy that we recently enacted, we've allegedly been told that this property doesn't qualify for that affordable housing language. And that's concerning to me, especially in light of the fact that in, in general, most of the units that they spoke about were on the higher end of the cost of units. So I just have a lot of concerns about the actual project itself. I'm in favor of the annexation. It makes sense, makes logical sense. But I'm concerned about the development itself.
Mayor, perhaps I can give a little bit more background on just how this came together. I think it would inform some of the council discussion. As this building sits right now, as proposed, I should say, up close to 60% of it would be in University Heights and about 40% in Iowa City. Obviously, I think we can all agree, we wouldn't want a building split between two cities. So that really brought us and University Heights together. At first, we thought it would be logical to place this in University Heights because of, you know, just the percentages that I talked about with the majority of that being there. The more that we talked with University Heights, the more we circle back to this being in Iowa City. And we did that because we are more of the full-service municipality. So as Danielle mentioned, oftentimes we're the service provider in University Heights. So we felt it was long-term, probably best interest that this be pulled into Iowa City. And then, you know, negotiated the revenue sharing agreement that's detailed in your, in your staff report with University Heights. So both jurisdictions would, would be essentially compensated for what would have been in their community. You know, dating back to the, well, let me start with the issue of size and scope. This is a large building. There's no, there's no doubt about it. That's a, it's a long building. It's a tall building. This has already been considered by University Heights and they found it acceptable. They, you know, their jurisdiction is directly adjacent to this. They have neighborhood directly adjacent to this. I think you need to consider the, the unique setting of this facing a golf course. And if you really look out from an aerial perspective, you'll realize that I think this isn't your typical project that's, that's sandwiched in a residential zone. This is a golf course style development with a lot of open space surrounding it. So we felt that that size and scope was, was, was okay for the context in which this, this building sits. With regards to the annexation policy, when we were developing that policy, we certainly had a lot of discussions with council on that. We really envisioned that more typical annexation, the greenfield type of annexation, where the city's extending services. We're bringing water, we're bringing sewer, we're bringing police and fire into these neighborhoods. And, and really thinking about that, it's 99% of the annexations we do is that, that kind of greenfield. The annexation is the technical tool that we're looking for here. University Heights severs and we annex. But, but this is very much a boundary line adjustment. Going back to that first slide that Danielle shared, this is about redrawing the boundary lines to accommodate a single building. We did not feel like that was the, the intent of that ordinance. And again, with the, the building could have gone in either jurisdiction. Certainly, University Heights does not have those same types of policies as, as Iowa City. So we viewed this very differently from a typical annexation, which is why we don't think that there's a fit for that, that policy in a boundary line adjustment case like this involving, involving two adjacent communities. Hopefully, that provides a little bit more context. I certainly understand the comments, but, but wanted to make sure you had that background from staff, too.
Well, I'm sorry, we're still in the public hearing or you closed the public hearing there?
Already closed the public hearing.
Just want to make sure. I think a couple of the comments have been made that are really important is, while there are residential properties to the south and to kind of south, southeast, as City Manager just said, this is not like dropping this in the middle of a major residential area. And the fact that it's gotten approval from University Heights, there's been the Good Neighbor Meeting. And essentially, as we said, this is, you know, this is a golf course development type thing with that outlook. So I think when you look at the distances and the small number of residences that are really close to this, I think that it's a good fit for that spot. And I think it certainly makes sense that it is all in one jurisdiction. And since Iowa City is the major provider of the services that, that it's in Iowa City. And then I'm glad we've been able to reach agreement with University Heights on that.
I did notice that at the Good Neighbor Meeting, there was some discussion about the screening from the residential properties. And an acknowledgement that the, the site plan had not been completed, so I certainly would, you know, encourage the, the team to, to look at the question of screening more carefully as they further develop the design. I did look, I requested from our Kelly, our city clerk, the material on the, the annexation policy. And insofar as the, the resolution for affordable housing references the comprehensive plan, I think it is fairly clear that the comprehensive plan is looking at annexation, you know, as it pertains to development outside the corporate bounty, boundaries. I mean, I am, I'm feeling a little bit, I am feeling frustrated by this project in some respects. It's, it's, you know, it's almost twice the allowable building height as would be allowed typically. You know, as was noted at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on this. Typically, when we do something of this sort, there might be some benefit that we could obtain by, by the waiver of the building height requirement. But it doesn't appear we have any language to cover that kind of scenario. So we have it in, say, riverfront crossings where they're, you know, allowing taller buildings through the riverfront crossing zoning can result in a affordable housing component. But we don't have it for this situation. So, you know, the opportunities to try to, you know, add to our affordable housing stock as desirable as I certainly would want this to be, I don't see any, any avenue by which we can achieve that at the moment. But I think it is something we need to consider in terms of language that would capture this in the future.
Do we have, go ahead, Laura.
Well, I was just gonna follow up based on John's comments. I mean, I saw that in the P and Z minutes, they sort of made a recommendation in looking at the affordable housing component relating to the height. So just, I mean, if, if somebody can kind of walk us through what the code does or doesn't say, if we would have that opportunity, or just how that would work in this, in this rezoning? Or if it has to be in the annexation, what that, how that works?
Well, I think Danielle, maybe you can help with, with just explaining how density bonuses work in different parts of the community where we have, you know, obviously, riverfront crossings is probably the example that most people are comfortable with. The code is written in a certain way for riverfront crossings to provide additional public benefit for density bonuses, but we have density bonuses elsewhere in the code that doesn't have those same type of public benefit provisions. Danielle, can you expand upon that, please?
That, that's true. And so there's several different tools that use density and maybe trade-offs. There's one specific zoning district, the PRM Zone, that has its own point scoring system built into it. The riverfront crossings is another tool. Really, the tool that's being used here is the planned development overlay, which gets you insight into seeing what the site development would look like at an earlier stage than you would typically with the annexation or a rezoning. You wouldn't have a concept plan at all. So, so really what you're getting in exchange for the request is an insight into the eventual site development. So you can react to that site development earlier as part of the OPB rezoning request. But that's, that's really the, the tool here, the bonus. With the waivers or modifications that are allowed to the zoning standards, you get to see that, what product that results in. So typical for a planned development to have variations and setbacks or other standards that are being varied. In this case, it's just heights.
Danielle, I really still struggling on understanding why the, you know, the annexation policy is not applying to this. And, you know, the matter of fact that the annexation is a few times that we can really, like, use it to do affordable housing.
So I think staff's interpretation has been that, as Jeff explained, annexation was for greenfield development, where the city is providing services and has greater discretion over stepping land into the city because it's taking on those responsibilities. And then the affordable housing agreements were part of that process. It's really not the case when it's already an urbanized area. It's what, basically just shifting boundary lines between two cities that are already developed those services.
Is that something written on the policy?
No, it's not, it's not explicit in the policy. I think it's recognition that part of this building was already in the city. So as you lay the building over the current jurisdictional limits, you've got part of the building that's already in the city. And part of it that was in University Heights in a developed, in a, in a developed state. So this isn't a site that's new for development. You had a, you had a, you had a university club here, a very intense use already here. So you're going from one intense use to, to another in, in the same urban area, receiving the same services that it, that it did. At the same time, part of the building's already in Iowa City as laid out. So it's, it's, it's very, very different than a traditional annexation. There's, there's no doubt about it. It's, it's really a boundary line adjustment.
I just want to finish my comment, please. Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Jeff, but you still, you know, I understand it is on the urban area, an area that's already being developed. But as the end of the day is outside Iowa City, and those people try to annex it to the city. So I think we can use annexation policy for that part of the, you know, of the building. Because, you know, it doesn't matter if, whether it is located in like urban's developed area or not, it still is annexing to our city. And I don't think that will interfere with the policy.
If I can just make a couple of comments. When I looked at this, I agree with the comments that have been made about what was contemplated when we did that annexation policy. In this case, we could just as easily be doing a severance as doing an annexation. If, if we had decided to do the boundary adjustment so that the whole development was in University Heights, then we would have been doing the severance and there would have been obviously no applicable policy. And they would have been doing the annexation and they don't have conditions for annexation as, as we do. The second part of it is the reason for the annexation policy was was because we have considerable discretion at that stage with annexation, and that is not the case here either. Our ability to accomplish this is entirely dependent on the agreement of University Heights.
I still want to just highlight that the policy make no exception for previously developed area that will be redeveloped. I don't think that will burn, you know, like really make us not applying the annexations policy to the site that going to be an exit to the city. And I want really proof in the policy, like I want something to be showing on the policy itself, if that something has been written or not.
If the council has a reasonable interpretation of that policy that says otherwise, then you're free to make that interpretation. Unlike a typical annexation situation where the person applying would be out of luck because you would not, they require your approval to annex in this situation, the likely result is that there will be a request for annexation in University Heights.
I just believe that we have to follow our current annexation policy. It doesn't say anything about whether the annexed building will, whether it was in urban area or whether it was in. It just say when we annex building, this is what we going to do. I mean, any, any kind of annexation building or just land or whatever.
I think this is great conversation. I have to agree with Mayor Pro Tim on this one because the annexation certainly, you know, doesn't talk about when another community, well, I guess, and then it's when someone severance their part as well as there's this 28 E agreement. And so I believe that in this situation, at least for me, there, you know, if in order for me to, you know, support it would be an acknowledgement and something from the developers and agreements between the cities related to our annexation policy with affordable housing. And so I think that's important, especially given some of the things that we want to do within our community as well as how we're treating other applicants that come to our city that want to annex. And and so this is unique. I would agree that it is on the border. It's a, you know, if it was the same product, you know, another university being expanded Athletic Club, then, you know, we wouldn't be having this discussion, or if it was a property that was being, you know, torn down and expanded, I might think about it different. If it was the same type of, if we didn't need to do the rezoning, but we have to do the rezoning as well. So for me, I won't be able to, I won't support this tonight.
Mayor, I was well, in calling it unique, because this has always been a unique situation. It's been kind of the joke for many, many years that that Iowa City should just annex all of University Heights. Sorry, sorry. Mayor From, but that's that, that's been a joke, but it's not a joke. It's U Heights is its own entity. But it's unusual and unique, as you said, because it's right in, right in the middle of Iowa City. I mean, how many communities can say that? So this is, this is a unique situation, and I think it needs to be looked at a little bit differently and and looked at more clearly as far as on the fringe of the city versus right there on the boundaries of our city. I think we do need to to look at that annexation language.
I would suggest that when we think about this, we may, we may have, when we did that annexation policy two years ago, I would suggest that we did not anticipate a situation like this. I think staff looked at it, I believe, maybe not. And I think council looked at it as annexing greenfield land, land outside of the city, you know, unincorporated area, not what essentially, as the city manager said, is a boundary adjustment with a neighboring entity. So we don't necessarily have the language in place to specifically address this situation. So we have to make a determination then how we want to interpret that and how we want to apply it. When I look at that from a very practical standpoint, I said, as the city attorney just said, I think there is probably a really good chance that if we turn this down, that this will turn on its head and University Heights will be asking to annex and asking us to do the severance because the developers will say, forget it, Iowa City, we want this whole project to be in University Heights instead. So then we will be contracting to offer services to a large building outside of our jurisdiction. It doesn't make the most sense on any part of this to do it in that form. Are we potentially missing an opportunity here because we didn't think about this type of situation? Yes, we are, but I don't think it's worth losing the whole project and what that entails. If we want to go back after this, and I I don't see this type of situation hardly ever happening where we're doing this kind of boundary adjustment between municipalities. I see the city manager and city attorney shaking their heads. No, this is incredibly unusual. And so I would encourage the council to move forward with this, knowing that maybe not it's the, it may not be the ideal, but I think too often we let perfect to get in the way of something that's really darn good.
Well, the one sentence that, you know, I looked both that the amendment which pertains to the affordable housing language, which then references the comprehensive plan, which has a section on annexation policy. And the first sentence under that annexation policy is growth and development outside the corporate bounty boundaries within the long range planning area and beyond is influenced by the city through annexation and the Iowa City Johnson County Fringe Area Agreement. So as much as I would like to consider this for annexation in the sense I that would would allow for 10% affordable housing, it seemed clear to me in reading the the annexation policy as it is stated in the comprehensive plan that that's the intent of the annexation policy. So, you know, I I would have to say that it's it is my interpretation would be that that's how this should, annexation polish should policy should be used in this case, which would not entail affordable housing component.
I also want to play this out a little bit. If if it flip flopped and the area was fully within University Heights, did they have the sensitive areas ordinance? Anyone know?
I think, I think they do. I can't say that for sure, but I think it it was an issue when the original Kinnick House was originally planned with here and there was some sensitive areas issues.
I'm sorry, Councilor, it may not be the same ordinance that, you know, they're going to have some differences and you're going to see differences in design standards and site plant, site design standards as well. And we haven't looked at those to see how that could influence positive or negative project.
Okay. I mean, I'm I'm inclined to, I'm, you know, following Counselor Thomas's line of thinking, you know, before we even had this discussion, I was looking at this as a tool, right? The annexation is the mechanism to get a a building fully within our city limits rather than have it straddling between two. And given that we're going to have a perpetual, like forever contract relating to, you know, the the supports for that, it makes sense to me that we would make it permanent in this way and bringing it into the city for providing all the services and are going to have a permanent agreement between the two municipalities anyway. So, I mean, I I very much appreciate that affordable housing is and has to be a priority. I think it's outside of the purview of this particular project in terms of the annexation policy, and we should continue to look for ways that we bring it in, you know, at whatever stage that we can. That's where I'm landing on this.
I'll just note too that that the Iowa code actually has a separate section that's called boundary adjustment between cities. And then within that, it talks about the annexation and severance being the mechanism by which you accomplish that, but it is its own separate process.
Any more comments? I do have a question. So annexing of the land, if we if if we annex this, if the council annex this and the rezoning doesn't pass, then they can't, they can't do the project as it is. Is that correct?
The, yeah, yes, the annexation, the severance and annexation will not happen if the zoning does not pass because the 2080 that you're approving as part of this item is says that that the approval of the severance by University Heights and the approval of the annexation by the city is contingent on both the tax revenue sharing and the rezoning that is your next item. It doesn't mean you have to approve the rezoning, but if you don't, the annexation will not go forward.
Yep. All right. The one, the one, so I I just wanted to make sure I understand that MEMS, Burgess and John is supporting this. The one question that I did not ask upfront was, were we in favor? But I was kind of, you know, not sure. Counselor Teller.
Mayor, I'm in, I'm in favor of the annexation and rezoning. I just had those concerns that I was hoping we could put in some sort of CD, CZA, but apparently that's possible.
Yep. Okay, I think if we're ready to take a vote, I guess for me, clearly, I kind of said this, is the is the is the rezoning part that I'm not in favor of. The the annexation sounds great. But it seems like it should be, I don't know, I'm gonna I'm going to support the annexation for now, but the rezoning, I'm not going to support. So I don't know if it makes sense to just not vote for the annexation now, but I'll have to decide when I vote. I think we're ready for a vote. Roll call, please.
MEMS?
Yes.
Calee?
No.
Taylor? Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes, yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion pass passes. All right, item number nine B is rezoning. Does council mind if I just go to our public comment really quickly? We're gonna, and Harry, I'm so sorry that I wasn't aware that your name was Dan Gable. And so I'm going to ask her to come and give full up to full five minutes. And sorry about that. Welcome.
Hi, um, actually, this is regular Dan. I'm going to get off and let Harry.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can hear you. Welcome.
So where was I? Anyway. So I'm going to start a timer for five minutes, right? And nobody's going to interrupt me or tell me to be germane, right? And I'm going to start it now. All right. I've heard many people. So firstly, I already talked to y'all about how like I don't trust y'all, how y'all are complaining too much and how we're just trying to hold you accountable and how we need to do a better job with like approaching mental health, all that stuff. Um, but anyway, the traffic camera thing. I've heard many people say that they trust traffic cameras to be less racist than police officers, but personally, I am not so trusting. Firstly, I believe this will be fun, just funding to extend the reach of law enforcement without any reduction on the end of the police force as a whole. Secondly, does not currently exist any government body in Iowa City that I would trust to plan this without creating racial disparities, either in the form of placing traffic cameras in areas where black and brown people live, in the form of enforcement, in the force of how deep these punishments and tickets are. Or I don't know, use your imagination. The problem of discretion still exists as long as this is built on a white supremacist foundation. Thirdly, I don't believe that putting a law in the hands of surveillance equipment and computer programs is necessarily a good idea. And I certainly disagree with the idea that it has less potential for racism. I don't know if you've heard about this, but I'd like to talk to you about something called the Correctional Offender Management Profiling for Alternative Sanctions or Compass. Compass was an AI program used in court cases to assess the likelihood of a defendant becoming a repeat offender. The results from Compass had black defendants being labeled as recidivists more than twice as much as white, almost as much as, almost twice as much as white defendants. It also disproportionately labeled white offenders as low risk, though a vast number of these white people commit, went to continue to commit crimes. I don't trust any computer program to not be racist because the people behind it will always be racist. I don't trust any of these like solutions that any of you are proposing because they all ultimately do not defund the police. They do not extend the reach of law enforcement. Like, if you catch me like speeding or whatever, like, I'm still going to have to pay a ticket. And if I don't have to pay a ticket, guess who comes and tells me to pay a ticket? It's still the police. Um, but basically, yeah, there will always be some kind of disparity, no matter how far you try to be. I think, I don't know. With the traffic thing, I think it might be worth it to look into like roundabouts, yellow lights. I think that was said earlier, other situations based in civil engineering, but that's another discussion. Give me a second. Regardless, we need to make sure that we are ultimately defunding law enforcement at every angle and surveillance and omnipresence need to be curbed at every attempt to introduce them into the community before they happen. My third point is to express my overall distrust in the city council to help advocate for our struggle. I believe that this side city council and the surrounding bodies have ties to either business owners, pro police organizations, or just other people with power that stand to lose something from defunding and abolishing the police. And thus, the city council has something to lose from defunding and abolishing the police. And therefore, they are not fit to truly advocate for our struggle. You continue and continue to whine about proceduralism, and you continue to insist on giving a voice to people who are advocating for a police department that tear gas tackled and otherwise brutalized protesters this summer. In addition to bringing harm to black and brown people every single day, you continue to whine about keeping it germane, but y'all refuse to have a real discussion about Iowa City Police Department's records with regards to police brutality. You refuse to have a discussion about Chris Kelly. You refuse to talk about the June 3rd incident. I still haven't heard anything about that. Who's been held accountable? I'm still like personally pissed about that. Like, my eyes got fucked up, bro. Like, come on. I could go on. You've dug yourself into such a massive hole with regard to the public's trust in you. At some point, you need to stop digging and start addressing the people's calls to defund the police. Otherwise, your political careers will die in those holes. Seriously, I'm not playing. Quit playing with me. Like, seriously, like, I but seriously, like, you need to take this discussion seriously. You need to let the bucket. I don't know. Y'all aren't even listening at this point.
Thank you, Harry. We are at item number nine B, rezoning Finkbine Ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 6.12 acres of land located near the intersection of Finkbine Commuted Drive and Melrose Avenue to medium density, multifamily residential and institutional public with a planned development overlay. And I'm going to open the public hearing. And I'm going to ask for staff presentation. Welcome, Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. So the presentation was made previously with the annexation. I will just summarize here the motion of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Based on a review of the relevant and general specific criteria, staff did recommend approval of the rezoning with two conditions. The first one has to do with withholding building permit until a plat is reported so that we can memorialize the boundaries of the zoning itself. And second, that prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy that the left turn eastbound, eastbound left turn lane on Melrose Avenue is installed by the developer to address turning movements at the vicinity of the project. And it's February 18th, meeting by vote of seven to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission, if you heard the staff's opinion and also recommended approval with staff recommended actions. The CZA has been signed.
Great. Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. And we'll ask for you to keep it to three to five minutes. Welcome, Sarah, followed by Nicholas.
Hi, it's Sarah Behren from the Affordable Housing Coalition. Again, I just wanted to take an opportunity to note that the argument developers won't like it if we enforce our affordable housing policies can be made literally every single time you have a proposed development before you. And we know this. And when you made this rule, you knew this. And I heard that argument about Carson Farms as well. And so I I'm just going to ask you to reflect on tonight's discussion. Did you really come prepared to ask the questions that you needed to ask in order to further the city's goals of affordable housing? And did you make a decision that really reflects the spirit of the discussions you've had about affordable? And did you make a decision that really reflects the spirit of the discussions you've had about affordable housing? I feel disappointed tonight to say that my answer to those questions is no. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah, welcome Nicholas, followed by Dan.
Uh, hello, counsel, once again. Um, I want to second everything that Sarah said. And actually, I want to follow up on the point that she made about the Carson Farms discussion. Because if I recall correctly, Counselor Mems, in that discussion, you made a big deal about the point of like having to stick to the letter of the law. And now suddenly, in this context, when it benefits a developer, oh, well, you know, we can fudge the rules a little bit. You see, it's this kind of hypocrisy that is so infuriating. I mean, literally in your work session, you had, I mean, I don't want to mischaracterize what Mayor Pro Tem said. So if I do that, Mayor Pro Tem, please correct me. But if I remember correctly, what she said was, she really wished that you had as much urgency for affordable housing as you always seem to have for anything else. And this here is a perfect example of that. Like, you have your own policies. You have claimed that these are things that you want. You have something in place that you could use to enforce that policy. And then you didn't do it. Like, that's the problem, is that whenever it comes to a crisis moment, whenever you have to actually finally take a side and actually have the courage of your convictions, you always choose the wealthy, you always choose developers. You never choose the people who are going to get screwed over by these policies. And you always find a way to do it. You always find some twisted logic to justify your decision. And it's so infuriating. These are the sorts of things that make people mad. Like, I, I wish I could be as calm as Sarah is about these things because you just do it over and over and over again, and you don't even hear yourselves doing it. So honestly, sometime I wish you would just actually sit down and listen to the recordings of these sessions and hear your own bizarre logic because it's maddening. Maybe it's not maddening to you because you don't care, but it's maddening to the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas, welcome Dan.
Sorry about that, oh, whoops, yeah. The, yeah, I don't know what's, yeah. Just a quick reminder, I forgot, I need to address this at some point. This is still hairy, and I know I've already spoken, but considering y'all wasted my time, I'll waste your time a little bit more. But anyway, Eleanor and anybody else in the city council or anybody that's like involved with this kind of stuff. I'm a woman and I use she/her pronouns. And like, I just want, before I go outside and close this Zoom meeting, I just wanna like set that record straight because I'm gonna be in here. I'm gonna be like talking to y'all about this until y'all do your jobs, which I don't have faith you're gonna do anytime soon. But anyway, I use she/her pronouns, my name is Harry Monali, good, stop. That's it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Please raise your hand if you're on the phone, press star nine. Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give first consideration?
Move, Thomas.
Second, Burgess.
All right, council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Salee? No, Taylor?
Oh.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
No.
Teague?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mems?
Yeah.
Item passes four to three. Item nine C, Yellow Rock Preliminary Plot. Resolution approving preliminary plot of Yellow Rock subdivision of forty point six two acre, seven lot subdivision with six outlets, outlots located in unincorporated Johnson County, south of Rapid Creek Road northeast, approximately 3,000 feet east of Highway one northeast. And could I get a motion to approve?
So move, Weiner.
Second, Sally.
All right, we're gonna have staff presentation here.
Thank you, Mayor, Danielle Sutman again, NDS. This is an application for preliminary plat for land located in Johnson County. It's a subject for a fringe area agreement in fringe area A outside the growth, growth boundary. Located south of Rapid Creek Road northeast, and it's approximately 3,000 feet east of Highway one northeast. Like I said, it's in the fringe area. This is a case that was recently approved by the city for the rezoning from agricultural to our residential county. It was done in December 2020. And the applicant stated that they're intended at time for redevelopment, redevelopment into seven lots, developed in seven lots, and that's what they're coming forward with now. Be seven single family residential lots and several outlots intended to accommodate stormwater infrastructure. The maps here show the outline of the property, both in regards to its zoning and in regards to the location of it in our growth boundary areas. A inside being on the lower left-hand side of the slide and the outside of the growth boundary area being well lighted, blue shading where the property is located. As I said, it would be a seven lot, single family residential development, including several outlots. You can see those laid out here along the cul-de-sac road. Stormwater management would be accomplished primarily on site. County does not have concerns about stormwater. When it regards to infrastructure, this is subject to the city's world design standards in the fringe area agreement. It is also being provided with a well water system of shared and individual sanitary sewer system as regulated by the county. And the outlots are primarily to accommodate a court clearing area shown here in blue as well. So the areas where the lots are being developed are the areas not when you start the court clearing primarily. As far as steps of development, as I mentioned, this has previously gone through a recent rezoning before you take a period on Ray Flat. And it will come back to you on your consent agenda when they complete this subdivision and are filing the final plat. On base on a review of relevant criteria, staff recommended approval of the plat as to the planning and zoning commission at their March 8th meeting.
Thank you, does anyone have questions for Danielle? All right, I'm gonna ask if anyone from the public would like to address this topic. Please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. And we ask that you keep your comments three to five minutes. Hearing none, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
He?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mems?
Yeah.
Salee?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 10, Court Street Transportation Center Lease Extension. Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and the city clerk to attest an addendum to a lease agreement with Gray's Iowa City LLC for commercial space within the Court Street Transportation Center to extend said lease. I'm gonna open the public hearing. And, yes, we're gonna welcome Julie.
Actually, I'm gonna take this one, when this, this is a commercial space that the city owns in the Court Street Transportation Center. The transportation center was built with federal FTA dollars and the commercial rent that's received in that space directly funds our transit operations. A previously established coffee shop closed probably about a year, maybe a little more than a year ago. We've since been marketing the space. Gray's was a restaurant located downtown that was displaced with a recent redevelopment project. We were able to accommodate them in this space. They are currently working to build out the site. Under my authority, I signed a short-term lease with them so that they could limit their business interruption. They wanted to get started right away. So we were able to negotiate a lease for fair market value of the space. However, Grace does, Gray's does anticipate to being a long-term tenant and wants that security from the city, which is certainly reasonable to expect for a tenant like this. They're asking the council for an extension of that lease, and that is before you to, tonight, that's specifically what you're looking at is four, five-year renewal options to Gray's on top of the three-year lease that I previously authorized. Happy to answer any questions.
Great.
Is this, is this the spot where the coffee shop used to be?
Yes, it is.
All right, would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Okay.
I'm sorry, Jeff, what you said you're going to be? Coffee shop also?
No, this is Gray's, it's a existing restaurant downtown that was displaced as part of the Tailwinds Project.
Yeah, sure, okay.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. On the phone, press star nine. Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Move, Mem.
Move by Mem, seconded by Taylor. Council discussion.
I'm really see this, uh, to be honest, I've been missing the food from Gray's. They've got wonderful, wonderful food. And this, this is so exciting that it's just a short, maybe block, block and a half move from where, where they were before. So I'm excited to see this and approve of this and hope it does stay there as long as that lease goes forward. I did have just a technical question, Jeff, if I could ask it. In our consent agenda, there was their liquor license renewal for their Clinton Street address. Will that carry over to this new address or will they have to apply for a new one?
I'm gonna defer to Kelly if she can, she may be more familiar with that than I am. My guess is they're just transferring it over.
Find my unmute. Um, yeah, I think when we talked to the state, they wanted them to apply for their, their current location and then do the transfer after.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm glad to see this go forward. It's great for the business and it's great for the city to have what hopefully will be a good long-term tenant in there, so glad to approve this.
Yeah, I would agree, Gray's is kind of a small business owners and they have great chicken lips. That's what people are in the community recognize them for, so happy to support this tonight. Hearing no more comments. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mems?
Yeah.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yeah.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 11, Gilbert Court Street Walk Infill. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Gilbert Court Street Walk Infill Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders and fixing time and place for receipt, receipt of bids. I'm gonna open the public hearing. And staff presentation.
Hi, everyone, I'm Mari Van Dyke. I'm the project engineer for the Gilbert Court Sidewalk Infill Project. So this project is generally located at the intersection of Highland Avenue and Gilbert Court, which is just north of Highway six and east of Gilbert Street. So the project includes construction of sidewalk on the east and west sides of Gilbert Court, which is shown here in blue. And then we'll also be updating the curb ramps at the intersection. So the two existing ramps will update and then we'll add another ramp on the south side of Highland Avenue. So this is an area where we've had multiple requests to put sidewalk in. It does see a lot or a decent amount of pedestrian traffic. So it'll be good to provide a safe and accessible route for everyone. The schedule for this project would be to open bids April 28th and award the contract May 4th. And then one of the adjacent business owners requested that we wait until their busy season is over to start construction. So for that reason, we will wait until August 2nd to start and then construction would finish September 30th. And the estimated construction cost is $87,000. So, and I'll give it back to you for questions.
Any questions? You got away easy. All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
Move, Sally.
I can, Weiner.
Council discussion.
This is a nice little infill project, given, given the activity on, on the street. So I'm happy to see it move forward.
I've actually heard from business owners there and walked by when it was sort of, you had this log through, through rain puddle. So it's, it will really help the area.
There are no more comments, roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mems?
Yeah.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero. Item number 12, alcohol in park shelters. Ordinance amending title, entitled alcoholic beverages, and Title 10, entitled public ways and property to allow alcohol in park shelters. Can I get a motion for first consideration, please?
So move, Mem.
Second, Taylor.
All right, and we're gonna invite Julie at this time to talk to us.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council, Julie Seidel-Johnson, Director of Parks and Recreation. With you tonight to talk about changing the ordinance to allow alcohol within shelter rentals in the parks. Currently, alcohol is only allowed at Terry True Blood Lodge, Ashton House, the Shakespeare Stage, and during events hosted by the city Parks and Rec Department. This would allow alcohol, meaning just beer and wine, to be consumed within any shelter that is rented. The two exceptions would be shelters at Kicker Soccer Field and Napoleon because they are youth sports complexes. We had one person ask why not City Park baseball fields? The reason is there's no shelter there to rent, so there wouldn't be, it wouldn't be allowed there anyway. This was discussed at the March Parks and Rec Commission meeting and they recommended approval. And it has been brought to the attention of the partnership, this University of Iowa Partnership for Alcohol. Sorry, I didn't get that. Alcohol Safety Partnership for Alcohol Safety. And we haven't received any comments back for that. So staff and commission both recommend approval.
Any questions for Julie? All right, would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand or press star nine on the phone. Welcome, Dan.
Hey, um, I have some question, questions just to kind of clarify so what the current situation with the legislation is. On firstly, who, if someone is violating the alcohol policy in a shelter, what is the process of kind of enforcing the no alcohol policy? And then, um, are there any records about enforcement of the policy? That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion.
I just want to thank staff and the Parks and Rec Commission for taking the time to really look into this and see what kind of changes we might be able to make to accommodate people. We started really, I remember I had a caller and email from somebody. They want to have a small wedding reception. And And, you know, we're wanting to have something like beer or wine there. So I think, you know, it'll take some, some watching to make sure that it's not creating problems. I certainly hope it doesn't and hope can people can abide by it responsibly.
If I remember correctly, our previous discussion of this, we were concerned about what the Partnership for Alcohol Safety would think about this and we hadn't really heard much from them. So this time around, I'm glad to hear that they are in favor of this. So I'm supportive of it also. And as Susan said, for those folks who can't afford those more expensive venues, this, this will be a nice to be able to, to have an event there at the City Park Shelter with some alcohol for their guests.
Mayor, if I can just clarify on the Partnership for Alcohol Safety, I think that's important. So after your work session, which was a little over a month ago, I believe, we sent a note out to the Partnership for Alcohol Safety membership informing them that this would be on the council agenda in roughly a month and requested that anybody with feedback get, you know, return those comments to the city manager's office. We did not get any comments back, but I don't want to go so far as to say that the Partnership for Alcohol Safety supported this. There was never a vote of that group. They just, none of the individual members chose to provide feedback.
Yep. Well, I'm excited that this is actually on our agenda. This is, I, I think Susan said it best when, when she mentioned the opportunities for people having small gatherings in the parks. And this is one way I believe to allow for equity. Of course, we want to make sure that we keep just an eye on it a little bit, just to make sure that it's successful. But I'm, I'm excited to support this.
I just want to ask question to Julie, kind of same question that Dan raised. Yeah. How will the rules be enforced and who will enforce the, the rules for this?
Sure. So alcohol use in the parks in general is enforced on a complaint basis. And it is enforced by the police. They can, they can issue a citation because it's against the park ordinance rules and regulations. So we aren't actually actively out looking at a shelter reservation. But if other park users or anyone else would register a complaint, it would be checked out. We really have not had very many issues with this in the five years that I've been here. In fact, I'm not aware of any large parties that have had to be, you know, broken up by police because of alcohol.
I'm glad. And hopefully, no, we are not going to have any. Thank you.
I do know that there was considerable research at other places throughout the state that allow alcohol in the parks. And so I know in the past, we've been informed about that. And so this is good that this is happening here. Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yeah.
Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 13 Parking Curbside Pickup and Delivery. Ordinance amending Title IX Entitled Motor Vehicles in Traffic. Chapter four entitled Parking Regulations.
There's been a game.
Section 10 entitled Parking for Loading and Unloading to establish a curbside pickup and delivery space. This is second consideration. And expedited action.
I move with the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration vote be waived and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
Great. Would anyone from the?
I said yes early. I don't know if you heard me. My internet is asking, acting crazy again.
Yes, we heard you.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, press star nine and I'll call upon you. Seeing no one. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yeah.
Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So move, ma'am.
Second, Weiner.
Move by ma'am, seconded by Weiner. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please raise your hand. Press star nine. Seeing no one. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Mims?
Yeah.
Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. All right. Item number 14 Social Justice and Racial Equity Grant allocations for fiscal year 2021. This is a resolution adopting the social justice and ratio, racial equity grant allocations for fiscal year 2021. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move by ma'am, seconded by Weiner. It was, it was kind of simultaneous.
I think it was Fergus and not me.
Oh, okay. Move by Fergus, seconded by Weiner. And staff presentation. Welcome, Stephanie.
Good evening. So this is a recommendation from the Human Rights Commission for the Social Justice and Racial Equity Grant for FY 21. And the commission is recommending to the city council to fully fund the following organizations, which are Open Heartland, the Labor Center, Sankofa Outreach Connection, the Food Pantry at Iowa, and also the Bike Library. They are further asking that the council partially fund the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition. And the reason for the partial funding of this particular organization is the commission realized that they would be going over the 75,000 that is allocated for the grant for FY 21, which is why the housing coalition would receive $15,000 as opposed to $25,000. If this resolution is approved, these organizations would build capacity in the community on racial justice and social equity. And some of the activities include an inventory of specific housing needs from BIPOC and low-income residents. It also includes a kid power program to youth living in mobile home communities here. In addition, the Labor Center would be providing high-quality job training opportunities, including skilled trades. It would also include from Sankofa Outreach Connection, a Ethnic Studies Leadership Academy for young women of color. And then the Bike Library would be doing a series that would honor historically significant locations to the black community and black businesses. If this is approved tonight, staff would work on getting funding out to these organizations no later than June 1st of this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Stephanie?
I'm sorry, Stephanie, but you know, my internet is not, you know, you've been cutting off to me. But you mean you requesting, you know, like more fund? That's what you ask or?
The, the commission at this time is not requesting more funds. They are asking for partial funding to the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition with the expectation that for future years that they probably will be asking the city council to provide more funding for this particular grant. If you look at all of the submissions, the total was a little over $400,000. And so it would provide them an opportunity to have more organizations receive funding of, under this grant if they were able to allocate more than 75,000 each year.
Mayor Pro Tim, I think you froze up again. So I'm not sure what all she heard. But good frozen picture. All right. Any other questions for Stephanie? Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, press star nine. Seeing no one. Counsel discussion.
I'd just like to thank Stephanie and the Human Rights Commission for their, their work, the work they do all the time. But, but especially in, in allocating these funds. It can't be an easy task to look through all of these worthwhile organizations. As Stephanie had said, it was the request total over $400,000 and what they have is 75,000, which sounds like a lot to work with. But when you've got that, that long list of very worthwhile organizations and 400 something thousand being requested, that's a difficult task. So, so thank you very much for what, what the work you've done.
I agree with what Counselor Taylor said. Thank you very much, Stephanie. Thank you so much to the Human Rights Commission for your really hard work on this.
Ditto.
I'm hoping Mayor Pro Tim would jump back on. And we can wait for, while we take this vote. I'm, I'm excited for this. I, you know, I read through the, the deserving names. And so this is really good. It's a great opportunity for the work of social justice and racial equity within our community. And very happy to the Human Rights Commission who gave great attention to all of the applicants. Of course, there are some that didn't get awarded that have very worthy causes. When you talk about, you know, over $400,000 worth of request and only having 75,000. I do believe that, you know, council, we're at a place where we probably should, you know, look at raising this grant in, in the future here as that's been mentioned by the Human Rights Commission. Thoughts? I am happy to support this and look forward to the individuals that will do great work within the community with these funds. And Mayor Tim is back. Great.
Are we still the same item?
Absolutely. We were waiting for you.
Thank you. Yeah. I just want to say, you know, all those organizations are great organizations. They do an amazing work in the community. Whenever we can able to be support them and, you know, even increase, you know, Human Rights Commission Fund, I will be happy to because I really believe on the work that all those organizations are doing. I will support this 100%.
Agreed. Thank you all.
All right. Roll call, please.
Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Mims?
Yeah.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 15 2020 Certified Local Government Annual Report. Presentation of the 2020 Certified Local Government Annual Report. And staff presentation.
Hi, everyone. Jessica Bristow here, Historic Preservation Planner, and I'll share some slides. It's hard to believe that I actually am still nervous and have adrenaline, even though we've been here for hours already this evening. So every year we submit an annual report to the State Historic Preservation Office about the activities of our Historic Preservation Commission. Over the last two years, they've started making that report digital. And with that, they have also suggested that we present to city councils. So this is the second time that we have done so. A little background, the National Historic Preservation Act was established in 1966 and it provided for a nationwide program, encouraged the use of historic resources, established the National Register of Historic Places that we talk about a lot, and also established the state offices, the state historic preservation offices. It was in 1980 when there was an amendment to the act that created the Certified Local Government Program. In Iowa, there is a lot of participation in this program. There are 91 certified local governments in Iowa, which is a huge number considering we're in the middle of the country. The Certified Local Government Program is about encouraging historic preservation activities and work at the local level. It encourages local governments to use the Secretary of the Interior standards for historic preservation. It also provides technical assistance through the State Historic Preservation Office and provides funding opportunities for preservation activities. In Iowa City, as you know, just a little background, we have eight historic districts on the map. There's like the Brown Street District, North Side, Longfellow, Summit Woodlawn. All of these districts are also listed in the National Register of Historic Places as historic districts. And they encompass 689 properties. We also have five conservation districts. They include the College Hill Conservation District here, Governor Lucas Street Conservation District. Unfortunately, this map was created before the Goose Town Horseman Conservation District, which encompasses a lot of this area right here. The Conservation District is only a local designation, so it does not have a counterpart with the National Register of Historic Places. But it includes in Iowa City 806 properties. Currently, we have 65 individually designated local landmarks. Forty-five of those are also listed in the National Register of Historic Places. A little general information, this map shows those districts and the red dots are all individual landmarks, just for your information. Our commission consists of 12 seats. We have some at-large seats as well as a commissioner for each of those eight historic districts. Right now, three of our seats are, are open. This year, the year of the report is the year 2020. And during 2020, we had 12 regular meetings. We did not have any special meetings. And we have a budget of staff and we do an annual mailing to all of the property owners as well. In addition to that, we have the Historic Preservation Fund, which started July 1st, 2017. So the reports put into several sections. And the first section is talking about things at more that level of the National Register of Historic Places. So they title it locating historic properties, identification, evaluation, and registration activities. And so when we document in this section, it's about the properties that are also listed in the National Register of Historic Places. One of the things that we did this year, but was not completed during the 2020 calendar year, was our Iowa City Downtown Historic District, which is nominated to the National Register of Historic Places. That will be sent to the National Park Service very soon. We review alterations, as you know, within our, our historic districts and conservation districts. The way the, the state wants us to calculate and tabulate what we have done is they want us to count the number of properties that were actually altered that are also listed in the National Register of Historic Places. So of the reviews that we did in 2020, 31 properties were actually altered. The next section is about managing, protecting, and preserving historic properties. And this is where we can talk about, like our conservation districts and some of the stuff that really just relates to our local, our local work. This is also where we talk about how the commission and staff provides their expertise to others. For instance, we work with all of our applicants very early in the approval process to try to, to, to make it more easier to get things approved by the commission. We provide resources on property history, resources about materials and contractors. We provide direction or options on project design during the review process. And we review applications and suggest modifications if needed. Sometimes also, for instance, the state had the architect for a project on the Poor Farm, which is a county-owned landmark. They had that architect consult with staff because we are kind of the local contact for projects within our general region as well. We also consulted with planners in Washington, Iowa about a, a, a moving of a building as well. For the local designated only. For the local designated-only projects, so that would be only local landmarks or projects in local conservation districts, we documented 22 properties that were altered. This photo or this image here is just a little bit of the drawing from the College Street Project downtown. Along those same lines, we do give them some more information about the work we do. For instance, in 2020, during the COVID pandemic and the shutdown, we reviewed 85 applications for historic review. That is down from the high of 98 in 2019, and we really assume that has to do with people's budgets to move forward with projects. Because on the other hand, we had 248 inquiries during that same calendar year. These are people reaching out to us about potential projects. Sometimes they'll reach out to us about multiple projects. In the last two years, that has increased 55%. We think in 2020, a lot of that was related, again, to people working from home or spending a lot of time in their home and dreaming about the things that they would really like to do to fix it or alter it or something like that. As you know, we also have our Historic Preservation Fund. And in 2020, we were able to give out 10 grants. Typically, we have eight grants, $5,000 each. We just had several projects that were less than our $5,000 maximum. So since July 1st, 2017, we have issued, we have approved 28 grants that improved 25 properties. A few properties had multiple grants. We also invest a lot of our time and resources into public education. As you know, we do our Historic Preservation Awards every year. In 2020, it was our first time trying to do something through Zoom, and it was a hybrid of a live and recorded event. I personally found it really fun to watch. I think that the commissioners enjoyed introducing themselves and watching themselves recorded, and we had good viewership. We presented 18 awards for properties and individuals like contractors, and the categories are listed here. And I just wanted to point out that we will have our 38th Annual Historic Preservation Awards, same format. And it's going to be May 20th, which is a Thursday. We wanted to get it in right before everybody went on their whirlwind vacations after getting vaccinated for Memorial Day. Also, last year, on February 25th, 2020, we presented, we had a presentation that talked about the civil rights grant work that we had for the Tate Arms and the Iowa Federation Home, and we presented that. We worked with Stephanie Bowers to get that presentation set up. Our annual report to the state also provides an area for us to just kind of talk openly about the challenges and successes we've had over the year. Because of COVID limitations on some activities, you know, we, I think maybe our activity level was a little bit lower. We had to adjust our processes and stuff. We had the challenge of, there was a clerical issue at the state with how they do their process for the review of the nominations for the National Register, and that caused us to have to do our downtown twice, and their state review was postponed, which we think that was a little bit of a challenge, and we had some concerns about that. We also have the challenge of the open positions that we've advertised for. We have several districts that are very small. And, you know, if you only have a dozen or so residences and families or whatever in that area, it's kind of hard to get new commissioners. Currently, we have two university students on the commission, and we have really enjoyed that. They tend to be active. They speak up. It is really nice to get a larger perspective on things by having students. And rental tenants in our historic districts can also be eligible for the commission. It's not necessarily the owner of the property if they don't live there. The other thing is just with the derecho, everybody is working in Cedar Rapids, and so we've really had a difficulty. Probably that's part of the reason why we've had fewer applications is people have had problems finding contractors who can work on projects. I know I've personally fielded calls all over eastern Iowa of people asking for contact information about contractors because they're so busy right now. Some of our successes that we have had is, of course, our Historic Preservation Fund. I've been here for six years, and it has been amazing thing to be able to have this fund to help some of the homeowners who really want to do the right thing and can't afford it, or they really need to take care of some repairs to prevent further damage or whatever. It's been a great fund to be able to use. Of course, we really champion the success of the agreement between the city and the university for this preservation of the St. Say Gilmore House, and really look forward to seeing that project come to fruition. And we also really think that the work that we did with other commissions and developers to save both the house at 410 412 North Clinton Street, which is pictured here, and the properties downtown, we think that those are good projects that we worked hard to review them multiple times during this year. And we look forward to putting those landmarks on our list for next year since we only count them once they're finally put through council. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for, from council?
Just really appreciate the perspective you offer us on this as a whole. Very helpful. Thank you.
I would agree. All right. Well, thank you so much, Jessica.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your night. All right, we are on item number 16, Council Appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. And this is 16A, the Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission. The Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission has four vacancies to fill, unexpired terms, and upon appointment through June 30th, 2022. And we have four vacancies, two female, one male, and then one, no gender requirement. And, all right, so wanted to see what people are thinking. I have some. Dr. Wongui. Dr. Wongui. And maybe I'll just give names for now, and then take account of names, and then we can come back and see where we land. Nikisha Jones. Angel Teller. David, I didn't write his last name down, but I know that Counselor Taylor suggested him the last time. There's two names, Borman. Let me see. Borger German.
Yes.
Yep. And then Caleb Binings.
So, Mr. Mayor, there are two Wongri's. Are you speaking, are you referring to Wongui Gathua?
Wongia.
Yeah. Wongui Gathua, okay, thank you. Who is, who is on, was on my personal list as well. I was really impressed by her, by her counseling background and work in the community. On my list as well are Clifton Johnson, Chastity Dillard, and Priscilla Culp.
Mayor, I also had Chastity Dillard and Clifton Johnson. And Priscilla Culp. No, I can't find my notes. Oh, and Wongui Gathua. Same for Laura did.
My list is also very similar, and I did recommend David Burger-German again. I think with his background, he would be an excellent person to be on this commission. Also, the same, Nikisha Jones and Wangai. Is that how you pronounce Wangai? Would be good. I had Amanda Nichols because of the CP thing, and I think I recommended her last time also because of that, because we at one time had said it might be nice to have somebody from the CPRB on that. So I had her. I know that's probably too many now. And of course, I know Dan Daly, and I'll give a shout out to him because he's a great guy, but he also has said that he's interested in the HRC, and I think he would be very excellent on the HRC. So I hope that when a position comes up for that, we can appoint him to the HRC if we don't at this time.
I have David Borger-German, Chastity Dillard, Clifton Johnson, and Wongui Gathia.
I don't, Daphne Daniel has been mentioned yet. I had her circled also with her background in fact-finding and also familiar with the TRC in South Africa. And she just, I thought, had a very good application and would be good on this also.
I think if I'm counting right, we have at least four supporters for Clifton Johnson, Chastity Dillard, and Wongui.
Yes. Mayor Pro Tim?
I support Wongui and, you know, that's one of the top of my list. I really don't have preference on, as a one or whoever, I will support.
Okay. All right. So thanks for helping me keep track. I was, I was writing a lot. I actually left a printed copy of all the names and my comments on my desk. Sorry about that. Okay, so let's go through some names, some names that's been mentioned that has at least two or more people supporting. So Nikisha Jones, Priscilla Culp. And actually, Priscilla Culp has has three right now. Yes, Priscilla. So those are Nikisha Jones, Priscilla Culp.
I think there were also a couple of people supporting David Borger-German. I'm not sure how he pronounces his name. Sorry.
Yes, David. Yes. Yep. So we do have, let me, so we have, and do we know how Chastity identifies? I don't have that before me right now.
It says she. I spoke with her this afternoon.
So we have two females and one male. And we have one more opening.
Mayor, I heard, yeah, Nikisha Jones Jenkins and Priscilla Culp were both kind of in my short list. So one of the other people I named didn't make this cut. I think either of them is, would be great.
Okay.
And I'm still supportive of David Burger-German.
Okay.
Me too, David.
David. Well, that, John, were you supportive of David?
Yeah.
So I think with that, that gives us the fourth person of council. We have four supports there.
Do we have anybody who has more than four as we were going through those names?
Yeah, Wongui, I think.
And Cliff had.
Yes.
It was more. And Chastity had at least one.
Yep. Yes. So I have Clifton Johnson, Chastity Dillard, Dr. Wongui, and David Borgen-German. As council, in agreement with that?
Sounds good. Yes.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Could we get a motion to appoint the four names that I just mentioned?
Move the four names you just mentioned.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. We are at item number 17, Announcement of Vacancies New. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Airport Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term, July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025. Community Police Review Board at large, one vacancy to fill a four-year term, July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2025. Community Police Review Board, current or former peace officer, one vacancy to fill a four-year term, July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2025. Historic Preservation Commission at large, one vacancy to fill a three-year term, July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. Historic Preservation Commission, College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term, July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term, a three-year term plus a three-year term effective upon appointment, June 30th, 2024. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn, one vacancy to fill an unexpired plus a three-year term effective upon appointment through June 30th, 2024. Housing and Community Development Commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term, July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. Library Board of Trustees, three vacancies to fill a six-year term, July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2027. Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31st, 2022. Planning and Zoning Commission, two vacancies to fill a five-year term, July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2026. Telecommunications Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term, July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
I move, ma'am.
Second, Burgess.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 18, Announcements of Vacancies Previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Vote of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term, May 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term, applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, April 13th, 2021. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals, licensed electrician, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, North Side, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Telecommunications Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We are at item number 19, and I know Ryan, we saw you earlier at our work session, so welcome from UISG.
Good evening, council. I got a few announcements tonight.
Good evening, council. Um, I got a few announcements tonight. Um, first is just to let you all know that Anna and I met with, uh, Tracy Heitzschu and Erica Kubli, uh, last Friday to talk about some, uh, options to expand affordable housing to students and connecting the city with the university more so that they can work on affordable housing since it's so hard for many students to access, uh, who still need it. Um, so we'll be working on that going forward. Um, also just to let you know, a sustainability gen ed for the College of Liberal Arts and Sciences did ask, so any students entering during or after summer twenty twenty-one will be required to compete, to complete a class in order to graduate. Um, next, some more unfortunate news, um, the move-in checklist bill at the state level, which our, uh, GR team has been advocating for unfortunately died for this session. So we'll hope to pick that mantle back up next session and continue to try and get that passed, um, in the future. And lastly, uh, as you'll know, the presidential search for the next, uh, university by a president has been going on. Four finalists have been selected and those names will be released, I believe, this week. Um, and they'll be visiting over the next two weeks on campus and both, uh, the undergraduate student government and the graduate professional student government will be meeting with them along with other stakeholders in the university, um, to welcome them and just ask some different questions. And there will also be, I believe, some town halls with each of the finalists going forward for students to ask them questions. Um, that's all for me tonight and, uh, Anna's not here tonight because it's her birthday. So I let her off the hook for tonight's council meeting. So happy birthday, Anna. Thanks.
Yes, thank you for your comments and happy birthday, Anna, for certain. And all right. We are at item number twenty, which is city council information. Just jump out there if you have any.
I would just like to start. Uh, Eleanor, it has been an absolute pleasure to work with you for the last eleven-plus years. Uh, I thought we'd make it to twelve, but you're bailing on me. So I just, uh, yeah, I can't say enough good things. It has been an absolute pleasure. You are the most incredibly professional, capable, caring person, smart. You've got an incredible team and anytime the city council has needed, um, you know, professional legal advice, you have been there to guide us. Not only on the legal issues, but also to help relate, you know, where, where the legal ends and where the policy and, and politics kind of begins. And so, you know, where, where your line is and which side of the line you're on and where we, where we are and what decisions we have to make. And the thing I felt really good about is not only all of that, but I have, I really feel strongly that when you felt it was in the city's best interest to fight for something, you told us and we fought and I don't remember us ever losing, um, in court. We probably did. But, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, you, you gave us really good advice. And when it was, it was like, no, we're in the wrong and we're going to own it. Um, and we owned it. And so you've, you've given us really good advice and it's been just a real pleasure to work with you. So enjoy your retirement and I'll be calling you and we'll get on our bikes.
Eleanor, I, I echo everything that Susan said, except that it's six, it's six years for me, but it's been, uh, very great six years. I've appreciated, uh, all of your advice and, uh, going, going to miss you, miss you a lot, but I'm wishing you the best in your retirement.
Thank you.
Um. Go ahead. As I said, area again, I wish you the best and thank you for your service during these years. Uh, you know, I guess we'll, we guess getting a start to know you and you're leaving. Uh, you know, that's like something, but you know, I guess you have to do what you want to do, but, uh, wish you the best luck for years to come. Uh, also I would like just to report, since this we are reporting also like event, I would like this to tell the public that, uh, you know, there is many, uh, as you hear about many, uh, amazing organization, they come together to help the people applying for, uh, IFA, uh, the IFA programs, uh, the Iowa Howling Authority programs. But I would like our city council to know something about this. That homeowner, I must, I don't know if they're going to be a label or not, because there is requirement of fourteen days foreclosure notice and most likely the people need time to be like, they need maybe three months, four months not paying for their bank to start sending them that foreclosure. I mean, like it would take time and that's one of the requirement that you have to upload a foreclosure if you are homeowner. There is many low-income homeowner who are really applying for these programs, but I don't know if they're going to get it or not. We haven't heard, uh, somebody get it or not. And keep on the mind, those people, same, those people, they are not eligible for utility and electricity. So, uh, the city have to do something for those people. You know, we, we, we said that, I don't know, but just keep that on mind and figure it out. We need to do something for the people who are not eligible for IFA. Regardless if this is just their status or because they are homeowner. Thank you.
Eleanor, I wish you the best and, uh, you know what they say about retirement, you never have a day off. So best of luck and happy trails.
Thank you. Eleanor, thank you very much for, for, um, all your advice and helping us work through a whole variety of issues. Haven't known you anywhere near as long as the others, but it's, it's been incredibly productive. And I always tell people, um, what, what my parents said after they retired, which is they couldn't figure out where they found the time to work. And I suspected it will eventually be that way. Um, I have two other issues that I want to raise, um, fairly briefly. One is about COVID. Vaccines are open to everyone. Um, real, I've had my first really urge people, um, to, to, to get their vaccine. I talked to Johnson County Public Health. They're coordinating with you, the U of I mobile, um, unit and, and at Pepperwood, there's a Coralville Library, um, clinic this week and they're continuing to plan for additional sites. Uh, and also urging pharmacies to expand their hours so that they're not just nine to five, so that it makes it more inclusive. Uh, and are also working with JCS on how, on figuring out a way to get out to those who, uh, who are housebound and cannot get out of their home. So, and if you have problems accessing the internet, you can call two-one-one and get set up with, with, refer to someone who can help you navigate it. Cases are going up, but there's, there really is hope through the vaccines. So hope that you will, if you have questions that you will ask about them and otherwise that you will sign up for a vaccine. And finally, I'm going to take a couple of minutes of your time. We had a lot of, we had a lot of proclamations. Um, we didn't have one, we don't have one yet about fighting, um, hate against the AAPI community. And I just, I wanted to cite, um, a, an editorial that Hannah Pinsky wrote on March eighteenth for the Daily Iowan. She's the, um, she is, runs the opinions page in the Daily Iowan and it was entitled, The Reality of Being Asian American. Um, and just a few experts excerpts, I'm sorry. Um, she said that while I'm essentially, I'm, while I'm relieved that we're finally having a conversation and, and grateful for people who reached out, I'm hurt and heartbroken that it took eight lives to do so. Eight lives for people to realize that our dehumanization is a problem. We're fighting for humanity and it's a battle that shouldn't need to be fought in the first place. We needed solidarity from the community sooner, and she's referring to the community in the United States as a whole. We need to recognize that anti-Asian ideas already present have harmed the AAPI community and the COVID nineteen only added fuel to the fire. The damage is done. And the question right now is how to move forward. We can't just ask ourselves how we can prevent this from happening again. We need to ask why we didn't recognize this problem sooner and we, why we allowed it to happen in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Janice. Um, I also was just going to mention the COVID vaccine availability for everyone sixteen and over and also just encourage people to continue wearing your mask and social distancing with the warmer weather. It's really hard, um, to not just snap back to, I don't know, something before COVID, I guess, as I, uh, look around town. So let's just hang on a little while longer. The, the, um, mask mandate is still in effect, uh, countywide. And I did just want to say, Eleanor, um, congratulations and thank you. It was when I had my first job, I was fifteen years old in the Iowa City City Council chambers behind a camera and you were there. So that was exactly twenty-five years ago. Didn't realize you were a brand-new, uh, city attorney then. So congratulations and thanks.
Um, so I did want to acknowledge that our mayor Pro Tim represented the city of Iowa City at the hashtag stop Asian hate on March twenty-eighth and, and so we did stand in solidarity, um, with the Asian community. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, um, for representing Iowa City's heart. Really appreciate that. And of course, uh, I, I said things earlier to our city attorney, Eleanor Dilks. Um, again, thank you for all that you've done. Um, I have to keep it professional because typically when I'm at, celebrations for retirement, I love to break out with, take this job and shove it, but I won't do that tonight. But, uh, I wish you the best in your retirement and sleep late. Do it for me. All right. We will go to item number twenty-one. And I think we're going to bump up to item C first with our city attorney.
Oh, glad that's all over. Um, uh, I, I, I guess I would just like to thank, uh, I, you and your predecessors for appointing me to this position and, and continuing to employ me. Uh, particularly through a time when I had young children and the council was flexing up, flexible enough to let me go to a reduced schedule, which I think is incredibly important for, for women in the legal profession. And the, the job has been really, you know, more rewarding and challenging than I certainly thought it would be when I applied for the assistant, uh, city attorney job. And my boss, uh, resigned, you know, shortly thereafter. So it, it's been great. It, it really has been. And I'd also like to thank the incredible staff, my staff, um, and, and the team of problem solvers that I get to work with at the city. Jeff and Kelly and the department directors and I feel just wholeheartedly that while people doubt this, um, more often than I think they have justification to do is that this staff works incredibly hard to try and accomplish the objectives of the city council. Um, and we keep that at the forefront of our minds and, uh, certainly that's my ethical obligation. But I think it's, it's the, um, the obligation that has been taken on by, by every member of the staff. And I just feel incredibly grateful to have worked, worked with them. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And we'll jump back up to our city manager.
Well, I, I'll say this, there's, there's nobody better at what she does than Eleanor. And I mean that from bottom of my heart with, um, all the experience that I've, I've had over my career. There's nobody better and we're going to miss her. But this might be her last council meeting. I still get to live in denial for another week and a half, uh, because, uh, the last day is next Friday. So I'm going to choose to stay in denial for just a little bit longer, um, and, and share some comments later.
Right. Our assistant city manager. Ashley.
Hi, um, I have just two comments, one of them being business-related. We had a really healthy applicant pool for our climate action grants. Uh, we're incredibly thankful that those will be coming through and getting reviewed and we've extended the student grants for five hundred dollars or, or less, um, for till May seventh. So people can look for that on our website. Uh, and I'll just say, you know, that I'm, I'm with Jeff in denial, but thank you so much, Eleanor. You're just a great example and, um, we're so thankful for you.
Thank you.
All right. And our dear city clerk, that's always working behind the scenes.
Uh, well, yeah, Jeff kind of took the words right out of my mouth. Um, I'm still trying to figure out how to get her to stay. So I'm just going to leave it at that.
Great. All right. Well, Eleanor, thank you again. On behalf of the city of Iowa City, we all say thank you for the work that you've done for this city. And we are at item number twenty-two. Do I get a motion for adjournment?
Yes, move.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any oppose?
No.
We're done. Have a good night, everybody.
Night.
Yes. Bye.